Hello, everyone. I want to welcome you to the public hearing this evening with the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm going to start out by reading the procedures we're going to follow this evening, and then we'll get started. So with no further ado, good evening. This is the regularly scheduled May 23 meeting of the Geneva Planning and Zoning Commission. I am Scott Stocking, Chairman of the Commission. Tonight, for the benefit of those in the audience, I am joined by Rebecca Holman, Commissioner Mike Slifka, Commissioner Anna Miskiel, Commissioner Tom Moran, Commissioner John Mead, I've got City Attorney Ron Sedak, Director of Community Development David de Groot, City Planner Matt Bucy, and Assistant Planner Jesse Munson. And welcome, John. The Planning and Zoning Commission meetings air live on Geneva Broadcast Network, which can be viewed on Comcast Channel 10, ATU verse Channel 99, and Metronet Channel 93, or the city's YouTube channel. This evening, the Commission will host a public hearing on Agenda Item 5A. As Chairman of tonight's meeting, I'll guide the public, the applicants, and the Commission through the public hearing process, which is outlined on the back of the meeting agenda. Please see this page for further details. The Commission will open the public hearing. The applicant will provide an opening statement and a brief overview of their request. Commission members will then have the first opportunity to ask questions and make comments. This will be followed by a public comment and testimony regarding the requests. The audience members will be called on and given an opportunity to comment. We ask that you state your name when it is your turn to speak. If your comment has already been made, or your question has already been asked, it is not necessary to repeat it. We remind members of the public refrain from varying off-topic or direct comments that are relevant to the requests being considered. Follow the end of the public testimony, the applicant will have an opportunity to comprehensively answer questions and respond to any comments made from members of the public. Additional questions or comments may then be stated by the Commission. The public hearing may then be closed, followed by the Commission's deliberation on separate requests. In order to help with the quality of meeting broadcast, our men, commissioners, to mute themselves except when addressing the Commission, commissioners are also encouraged to state their name prior to speaking and prior to providing a roll call vote to better assist our record keepers, for example, Stocking, Yeh Day, or State. Okay? Any questions based on that?
Can you increase the volume a little bit?
Okay. Try that at the back. Okay? I try to speak up, but sometimes I don't do great job with that. Yep? Okay? So there, we're good on that? All right? So folks who are going to testify today, please rise and raise your right hand so I can swear you in.
Do I have to have public damage?
Yes. Anybody who's going to give testimony to the Commission this evening? Okay? Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. You may be seated. Okay? With that, Hannah, please call a roll.
Mead.
Mead here.
Evans. Slifka.
Slifka here.
Holloman.
Holloman here.
Miskiel.
Miskiel here.
Moran.
Moran here.
Stocking.
Stocking. All right. Next item is the approval of this evening's agenda.
Moran, move to approve.
Slifka, second.
Moved in second at all. In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next item is the approval of the minutes of the May 9, 2024 meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Move to approve the May 9, 2024 minutes. Slifka?
Second. Mead?
Moved in second at all. In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. So we'll get on to our public hearing item. It's Item 5A. It's the Verizon Tower on Randall Road. The request is for special use in the B5 zoning district to construct an 85-foot concealed wireless communication tower. The applicant is DRA Properties LLC, and the location is 1749 South Randall Road. And Matt, could you read items into the record, please?
All right. So the contents of this file include an application for a special use permit filed by DRA Properties LLC dated September 26, 2023, includes the following: a supplemental affidavit from Jesse McDaniel, a sworn statement from Jesse McDaniel, a response to special use standards, an alternative site and ranked alternatives analysis, a Verizon facilities plan, a Randall and Glen Eagle pre- and post-simulations, map of Verizon Wireless site information used in coverage analysis, a property value impact study, an FAA determination of no hazard to air navigation, a Sabre Industries fall letter, National Environmental Policy Act letter, a National Environmental Policy Act Amendment 2 letter, site plan engineering spec and elevation drawings, photo simulations, a report from a third-party consultant, MSA Inc., the legal description, the proof of ownership of purchase agreement, the right-of-way permit application, land use opinion application, stormwater permit application, King County Road impact fee application, the list of property owners within 500 feet of the subject property, and the affidavit attesting to the accuracy of said list of property owners within 500 feet of the subject property, a copy of the letter to all property owners within 500 feet providing notice of the application being filed, a copy of the letter to all property owners within 500 feet providing notice of the balloon test held on April 18, 2024, a certificate of publication from the Daily Herald for the legal notice that was published on April 4, 2024 for the April 18 balloon test, all photos taken by city staff of the balloon test held on April 18, 2024, a certificate of publication from the Daily Herald for the legal notice that was published on May 8, 2024 for tonight's public hearing, a copy of the public hearing notice mailed to all property owners within 500 feet, a copy of all public comment related to this request received prior to 5:00 p.m. on May 23, 2024, a staff report from the Community Development Department to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated May 23, 2024.
Okay, very good. Before we get started, we'll hear from the City Attorney on some things we need to consider in the hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Ron Sandak. I'm one of the attorneys representing the city of Geneva. What I'm about to ask, and it's an ask, is that all be mindful of what this tribunal's tasks and duties are. They're a land use body. While all comments and questions are welcome, it is a matter of federal law, not state, not local, federal law under the Telecommunications Act of 1996 and the Federal Communications Commission. Health issues, purported health issues having to do or deal with cell towers are verboten. This body is a land use body. So comments about purported EMF and/or related items are not welcome, respectfully, and if that, if anybody, whether it's the petitioner or a member of this council, commission, excuse me, starts in that direction, I will politely ask you to cease and to maintain comments at the special use that sought and the criterion thereunder. This is for preserving a record that needs to be preserved. This body is an evidence-inducing body under the land use locale and ordinances here in Geneva. So please, respectfully, I ask that you confine comments to the land use items and the criterion for a special use permit. Thank you for your attention and cooperation. It is truly appreciated.
All right. Thank you very much, Ron. All right. And with that, we'll hear from the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. My name is Doug Dolan. I'm with Dolan Realty Advisors and President of DRA Properties. DRA Properties is the entity which will own the proposed cell site. I've come before you before, three years ago, with another proposal. We have since revamped and reworked that original proposal after listening to the comments from the city and from the residents. Our need with Verizon Wireless is very strong for a cell site here, and we plan to demonstrate why this site is the best site, why this site is the only site that best fits the needs of the city, both for the community and for the network needs of Verizon Wireless. The proposed site is at 1749 South Randall Road. It has unique characteristics in that it has a large parking lot in the rear of the building, and I'll demonstrate that the neighborhood, commercial neighborhood, is filled with shopping centers and retail strip centers, most of which have a small back driveway before residential properties. The property is zoned for commercial use, and it's zoned for cell towers are permitted commercial use under the special use permit. There are nine standards to meet the commercial, the special use permit, and our presentation today will demonstrate how we've met those nine standards. This is the search area. This is the area that's, has been scrutinized over time. The proposed site is the yellow star behind the retail center. This site has been moved north. We had, our original site was further south and closer to the residential properties. We moved it as far north as possible. It's still within the search area and still will provide the best service to the residents and community. It was mentioned by Mr. Bucy earlier, we have Commissioner Packett documents, and on your, before you, we submitted last week a stack of documents. They're important to demonstrate why we've met the standards of the city. I'll go through each one because it's important to get it into the record. However, I'll summarize each one and not reread them word for word. If you'd like, I mean, to stop, you'd like to go through word for word or go back, I'd be happy to. The first is an affidavit from Jesse McDaniel. He's a network engineer at Verizon Wireless, 17-year industry professional. He's been, he's graduated with an electrical engineering degree. He is the network engineer that's been assigned to this site for Geneva. This is an affidavit that he signed under a penalty of perjury that shows why the site is needed. There's been a few factors that I'd like to cover, one being, there's been talk about small cell, and why can't we do small cell? Why do we need a tower, a pole, as opposed to small cell? The small cells would not, are not designed, nor will they cover, provide the coverage to the community that the community wants and needs. Minimum would be 20 small cells. They'd be 30 feet or so tall, and they, even under the best-case scenario, the RF engineers said they're not feasible or practical. It's not a tool that they'd use in a community like Geneva to provide the coverage and capacity that's needed by the businesses and residents of this area. The site will also go on to show that this site is equidistant from two existing cell sites. So oftentimes, again, why, why here? Why not some industrial park a mile away? Well, we're in industrial parks a mile away. We're a mile north, and we're a mile south. We are equidistant. So the problem, the gap, is here in this section of Geneva. That's where the gap exists, and we have testimony from our RF engineer to that fact. We're also asked, as part of our application, to evaluate city-owned property. Why can't we use city-owned properties? We identified and evaluated all the city-owned properties, and from a combination of floodplain, stormwater retention, or size, they were deemed unusable for a cell site, and we have testimony to that here, too. Affidavit. This is the response. Again, there are nine standards. Again, the property is zoned for cell tower use, up to a 100-foot.
Mr. Chairman, just point of order, could we go back to that document for a second? Sure. Certainly. What's the date of this document? Because what I have is the sworn statement of Jesse McDaniel from 2020. This affidavit doesn't have a date on it, so I'm just wondering when it's from.
That would have been the original affidavit. We were asked by the city to supplement it. So what I'm showing you here is the supplemental affidavit from Jesse McDaniel. We went into much more detail. We were asked to explain why we couldn't use small cell. We were asked to explain why this site versus other sites in the city. So we supplemented the original affidavit.
But there's no date on it. Is that correct?
Oh, I'm sorry?
There's no date on it? I'm just asking. I don't see a date on this affidavit.
Oh, date. Date. I thought you said data, date. Let's see. Well, it's, well, we have, we have the date that it was submitted to the city, and I can testify that it was done during the application process, which would have been the last 90 days.
Okay. Thank you.
Maybe, I think I'll pull this out, if that's okay, and then I can stand. Oh, no, I can't. I'll try and stand closer to the mic.
There we go.
And still have enough.
Now, we gotta pick up.
Okay. I have to keep this just open so I can continue to advance this. Okay, thank you. So a key component of our application is to demonstrate why we have met the special use standards in their nine standards. And, excuse me, but I was mentioning earlier that this commercial district is, cell towers are permitted in this district under the, if we meet the standards of the special use. And that is an important factor, because it does allow up to 100-foot cell tower. Our cell tower happens to be 85 feet. It's 100 feet if it's a stealth structure, it's 80 feet as a regular, traditional monopole. We learned from our first application that a traditional monopole is not what the city or the community wants, and so that's why we've come back with a redesign. A lot of this is text. It's in, it's in the, your applications, it's in your applicant, your, your staff paperwork, and it's also posted on the website. So I'm not going to read it word for word, but the, the proposed use, the specified location is consistent with the comprehensive plan. So part of the comprehensive plan includes the photo simulations, which will demonstrate that the concealed measures taken to comply with the city's desire in its comprehensive plan to maintain the desired, the design objectives of Randall Road, and we plan to demonstrate that in this application. The proposed building or use will not diminish the value of adjacent nearby properties. This is a key point and a point of contention at the last hearing. Since then, we've hired a certified appraiser. He's an Illinois Registered Certified Appraiser, and part of our testimony today will be to show you the results of that appraisal. Sometimes, I've been in real estate for 30 years. I understand real estate people have comments and have thoughts, but I know that a certified appraisal is, is what banks rely on and not what I mentioned or think the value should be. The, the report will demonstrate there is no adverse effect on adjacent properties. The next number, proposed use and specified location will not substantially or unduly increase traffic. Traffic of the site will be minimal. A cell technician will visit the site perhaps once a month or once a quarter. So they're in just a traditional SUV vehicle. The proposed use, standard number four, the proposed use has been designed to provide adequate ingress and egress to minimize potential traffic conflicts and congestion in public streets. We have selected that trash enclosure area of the retail center, and the trash enclosure area is served by existing roads. We're not building any new roads or any new access points to this property. Standard number five, the proposed building or use will not adversely affect or change the character of the area which it is located. The stealth structure is designed to blend in the landscape of the property. The ground equipment will be concealed behind a brick wall. And that's an important point I didn't make earlier. The equipment, the base station equipment is located in the trash area. Existing trash enclosure is concealed with a brick wall. We will continue that brick wall to conceal the equipment on all four sides. So the equipment is perhaps six, seven feet high. The brick wall will be eight feet high, so there'll be no visibility to the ground equipment. The proposed use, standard number six, the proposed use of the specified location will not adversely affect the use and development of adjacent nearby properties in accordance with the regulations of the district in which they are located. So again, we are proposing 85-foot stealth pole. This stealth pole will have no external antennas, and there were, the shades were closed, but there's two, there's two towers outside of these windows. Those have exposed antennas. Those have exposed wires. Those have exposed mounts. Our entire, all our mounts, all our cables, and all antennas will be concealed within the structure. Again, just to reiterate on this, tower this side, there will be no lighting. There'll be no FAA lighting required for this site. So at night, it'll be dark. The site does have mature trees that surround it, and again, it's, the concealment factor of the ground equipment is there, and we do have photo simulations which will show the proposed height, and we'll come up with that shortly. Number seven, adequate utility drainage and parking. Basically, it's, well, the only two utilities we use are power and fiber. That's the only two that we use. We don't, there's no water or sewer needed. Proposed building, other structures, and use comply with any of the regulation, the proposed building, other structures, and use comply with any and all regulations, conditions, requirements of the city applicable to such buildings, structure, and use. Yes, we have complied with the city's ordinance, and I believe the staff report backs that up. Also states that we have complied with that, with that requirement. Last is nine, that the exterior architectural peel and function of proposed structure will not be at variance with either the exterior architectural peel and function of the plan of the structures already constructed in, or on the course of construction in the immediate neighborhood, or a character applicable district to cause a substantial appreciation of property and value in the neighborhood. So as testimony, we have, within our application, certified appraisal that states that there is no, that property values will not be diminished. The self-pole will be a single pole without guy wires or FAA lighting. Again, I won't read the whole paragraph because in order to comply with the ordinance, it's, we have a somewhat lengthy PowerPoint. I know there'll be questions and answers, but I can go back and review any of this Color of the pole will be a gray color, a neutral light gray. That's the color that's deemed the best ability to blend into the background. So when there's cloudy day, some people often think of blue sky, you want to paint it blue, but a gray color is actually the best color to, it won't reflect light, and it's the best color available. Height, again, we've covered, is 85 feet. We do have a structural safety letter. We'll go into that in a moment. And we have met the city's zoning district setback requirements. Lighting, there will be no lighting at the property. I will say, there's sometimes a work light at the six-foot level, but beneath the eight-foot level, which allows the technician, if there's an emergency outage, if there's an emergency outage in the city, they will send a technician at 2:00 in the morning to go and fix it. It's, these have become essential services for emergency services, too. Cover the brick. We're going to have an eight-foot masonry wall, landscape and screening. We're going to maintain as much landscaping as there, and we're going to add more. There will be a generator. It's an emergency backup generator. This will only be used at times when we have a power outage in the city. So in case of a power outage, in case of emergency, in case of a severe weather event, we will have a generator which will return this cell site to service. So one of the items that came up during our last pre-presentation was alternative site. Why here and why not over here? Why not over here? And so this, we were asked, and did, went through each of the properties in the neighborhood, all in the search ring. Again, the primary focus is Randall Road and the surrounding residential areas to provide service and capacity. So Geneva, Christine is the owner of this particular property, which is highlighted yellow. It has unique characteristics of separation from residential. It has the size, and it has the location, and that's the only property in the search ring that meets that criteria. The city also asked us to rank why we couldn't use the alternates. I've covered this earlier. Again, I'll re, I'll review, and I'll go deep, as deep as the commissioners want, but why not small cell? Again, the RF engineers testified that small cells will not address the network needs, capacity, and coverage needs for this area of Geneva. So they asked me if there's a replacement of existing cell site. There are no existing cell sites. And that's another important point, is that oftentimes, before we build a new tower, we look for existing structures. Is there a water tank in the search area? Is there an existing building that's tall enough we could place antennas on the roof? Is there an existing cell tower? Cell towers now are colocatable. So we try, our first choice is to co-locate on existing structure. We don't build, build new. We want to co-locate water tanks, rooftops, and existing towers, none of which appear, and our testimony is that none of which appear in our search area. Again, this designates that city-owned properties and why, why they will not work. The red star is our proposed structure, 85-foot stealth pole. There is another cell site that's, that is in, under works in the planning stages for Randall and Lincoln Highway. They're going through their development process, and at some future date, because even these two cell sites are not expected to cover the capacity and coverage for this growing town like the city of Geneva. There's a third cell site, the blue star, which is planned. It's not budgeted. It's not even, we're not even talking about it, but city was careful to say, hey, what, you know, what other cell sites are you considering in this area? Okay, this, these are pre- and post-RF or radio frequency simulations. These will show existing coverage in the city of Geneva for this particular area. So these are, these ink lots are basically, the purple is the existing cell site. So that's an active, working, existing cell site. On the north, there's an active, working, existing cell site on the south. The proposed site with the red arrow is equidistant between the two. Important point about how network engineering works is that not only will it improve coverage here, but this cell site will help offload the existing cell towers. So the existing cell towers are reaching capacity, which means that they are reaching the number, they're reaching the number of callers and data that they can handle. So this site will also offload the two adjacent sites, which will improve coverage and capacity to the entire community of Geneva. So that can get, it's, it's an important component of our application. That shows the coverage map. So this is before, and this is after, so before and after. So it infills, Randall Road is a, is a major thoroughfare, a lot of commercial uses, and Verizon Wireless network engineer has demonstrated, and his testimony was that coverage and capacity is rising in this area, and that this cell tower is needed to cover it. So this is from the RF engineer. The primary objectives is that it's network capacity offload to the neighboring sector serving the Geneva area. That's what I mentioned earlier, that it's not only going to serve this particular area, which is so important, but it helps offload the neighboring sites, which strengthens the entire network. It's also important, if I haven't said it earlier, our cell site will be designed for co-location, which means that if you're an AT&amp;T customer, if you're a T-Mobile customer, our cell site will be designed to accommodate those antennas also. There will not be a need for another cell site in this area. Our cell tower, as required by the city of Geneva, will be colocatable, which will be able to handle AT&amp;T and T-Mobile. Reliable coverage for 911 calls, police and fire, location-based services, and the next, what's coming is video calls, 911 video calls, accidents, crime scenes, will be able to have video contact with the person, with the victim, and be able to respond. Oftentimes, you'll hear 911 calls, ask you 20 questions, trying to ascertain what's going on. The next stage is going to be video calls. The capability, you can always call on your phone, you can always talk, you can always, but texting and video are future components. Reliable in residence, so the benefit is reliable in residence, in-building coverage along Randall Road, and faster 4G speeds in the local area. Public safety I'm going to talk about is the fire, police and fire, the 911 calls, super important now, in five years from now, that people are able to make 911 calls, to get priority, and that the location of the caller can be identified. It's my testimony that more cell sites will, will better identify where the caller is actually calling from. Fewer, busier cell sites make it harder to identify the exact location of the caller. 74% of American homes are wireless-only. The landlines have been going out, are going out, some are holding them. The landlines have been going out, are going out, some are holding them as a backup plan. But now and in the future, wireless calls, future buyers, properties will want to know, can I use my cellphone here? Do I have to get a landline in order to communicate? The preferred option for buyers of new homes is wireless only. Additional cell sites help triangulate the location of the nine-one-one calls. Verizon will be required to operate within the safety limits established by the FCC. So that's just a statement. It's, it's part of our licensing regulation that we agree in advance that we will comply one-hundred percent with the FCC Commission, with the Federal Communication Commission. So this is a map of Verizon Wireless site information used in coverage analysis. This gets more complicated, gets more detailed, it's harder to explain in a shorter meeting, but included in your packet, included on the website, is a list of all our existing, the five cell sites that serve the area around Geneva. The two blue in the bottom are the proposed sites, the site that we're speaking of, and the one at Randall and Lincoln Highway. All five sites, the city asked us to identify all the existing towers in Geneva and near Geneva. And those are identified by the yellow diamond points on, on the map. This also demonstrate the coverage hole that we have at our existing site. Property value impact study, referenced this earlier. This is a cert- certified general appraiser from the state of Illinois who concludes, and again, we can, this is available on the website, it's available in your packets, and I can discuss it in more detail later. But the analysis of the appraisal was that there is no empirical evidence that suggests the proximity of the communication tower has a measurable impact, positive or negative, upon adjacent residential properties. Signed, Mark J. Lane. He's an Illinois Certified General Real Estate Appraiser. FAA aeronautical study, these are some technical items we're going to breeze through, but it's important, before you build a cell site, you obviously need the FAA approval. So this is the approval that we received from the FAA. Again, it will not require any FAA lighting. These are just the exhibits that go onto the, with the FAA. We also were asked by the city, part of their examination of our application, that we provide a letter from the tower manufacturer that the, which will be Sabre, that Sabre Structural Engineer can, can talk about the, what happens in the event of a catastrophic event on this, on this site. What if it was a direct hit by a tornado? What, what, what happens? And without reading the letter, again, it's in the letter, it's on the web, and it's, it's in your packets. It says it can handle a hundred and seven mile per hour wind. And it is, it's designed to the latest tower standards. Towers built, radio towers built thirty, forty years ago are not nearly the strength that they're built now. Perhaps the best part of this letter is that if it were hit by a tornado, it doesn't fall like a tree in the forest, it bends. It'll bend like a hanger. So in other words, if there's a direct hit from a catastrophic event, instead of breaking and falling, it bends. And that's, that's, there's built-in failure points that, that will bend like a hanger. Haven't seen one yet, but I'm sure it's happened. Again, part of the technical aspect is that we do need the National Environmental Policy, NEPA, letter, and that's part of the application. This basically, we have to do a survey of architectural items in the area. We have to do a survey of any, an archaeological dig to make sure that there's nothing in this area that's sensitive. So sometimes we'll run into an, an old church or something that's in the view shed of the cell site, but we do not have that here. So we're nearing the end, but this is the plan set, these are the drawings that we've submitted to the city and part of your application. Again, I'm going to try and go through this a little bit more quickly, but this is our proposed cell site is directly behind. Learned I've got a pointer here, but with all this yellow here. So if you can see my red dot, here's the cell site right here. It's a little bit clearer view of it. Again, the existing use is a trash enclosure area, a brick trash enclosure area. We plan to place equipment inside the brick enclosure area and extend it and expand it. There's a profile view of the proposed cell site, eighty-five foot stealth slimline pole. The cables, the brackets, the antennas will all be concealed within that pole. We're estimating the size at the top about thirty-two inches, thirty inches to thirty-two inches. And you can see the equipment at the base and you can see the height of the, of the brick wall will conceal the equipment at the base. This is a, it'll roll through here, the next thirty seconds, it'll roll through the photo simulations. So we had our engineer prepare this. We went out and took pictures of the existing balloon lift that we did. And we, we, and one option is a flagpole. I prefer the other pole, but we do offer a flagpole as an option. This is taken from the park across the street. We certify the height at eighty-five feet on the tower. So another view from the park across the street. Again, that light gray color we feel is the best color for, for the site. Okay, that concludes that. I'm going to flash, this was also covered recently in the, the video, it's just a backup copy that we have in case the video didn't work. But the video did, so I'm going to flash through these. Let's get a water. The city is part of the requirement required a consultant's report. This is a third-party report to evaluate our applications. Not uncommon with cities, telecom application is a fairly technical item. You need somebody with experience to evaluate it and determine if the need is real, if the structure is appropriate, and if this is the right site in the right area. Again, I'll not read it word, word for word, but the company is Municipal Services Associates, MSA, and they're experts in telecommunications consulting. The city contracted with them. I've not met this or talked to this particular gentleman, but we did provide all the information of the city that was asked. He evaluated the site, he evaluated the tower, he evaluated the location, and he evaluated our antennas, and he evaluated the radio frequency analysis. We provided them all our, our entire build list of base station equipment and antennas that we're going to mount inside the pole. I have the conclusion here. Again, the full report's available in your packets, full report's available on the website. And again, I quote, notwithstanding the foregoing, and one of the foregoing is that they asked for, and we will provide, a structural drawings. The, we will get the full set of, what we've submitted is a full set of construction drawings, but we will submit and make it a condition on the building permit that we submit a full set of structural drawings on the tower, which will be a condition of the building permit. So notwithstanding the foregoing, MSA recommends that the city of Geneva allow DRA and Verizon Wireless to proceed with the construction of a new monopole tower antenna array, base station, generator as a special use.
Doug, just really quick to, for the benefit of the commission, Mr. Chapman is here with us. If there are questions or concerns about the report, he is here to answer those questions.
Wonderful.
Thank you, Matt.
Summary. So the stealth design was specifically chosen to protect the character integrity of the community. Cell sites are necessary. Cell sites are absolutely necessary to the network for a growing community to provide the connectivity that you will need now and into the future. It's our job and my job to find the best, most suitable sites that thread the needle, that get the coverage and capacity, and yet are very sensitive to the needs of the community and very sensitive to the aesthetic concerns of the community. Stealth design will be built to accommodate four carriers, which will allow the future growth. Right now, it's proposed 4G and not 5G, although 5G is always a possibility. Reliable wireless service is essential to local residents, business owners, public safety officials, and the visitors to the city of Geneva. Proposal will allow Verizon and others to provide the critical service when, when needed. And I mentioned earlier, the city of Geneva's consultant did give a recommendation that we proceed with this cell site and did demonstrate the need for the cell site. And that concludes our, my presentation and be available for questions or comments.
All right, thank you very much.
Sure.
Commissioners, any questions at this time? John, looks like you're ready.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a couple of questions. You're building this for Verizon. At the time of construction, will you have a signed lease from Verizon? And for what term is that lease? One thing I would not want to see is a tower built with the hope that Verizon's coming in and then we have an unused tower.
Yeah, no, this, this is one of Verizon's top ten sites in this whole region. So it's a very, that's the reason I keep coming back. Very important site. We will have a signed lease, part of it, we have the terms and we do have a lease prepared. That's part of the process to get zoning approval and sign the lease. But yes, Verizon is one-hundred percent involved and one-hundred percent interested in the site, and we give weekly updates on our progress.
Typical term of a lease with Verizon, ten years, twenty-five years?
So it's five-year, initial term is five years with four or five-year options.
Okay, so twenty-five years total?
Twenty-five years. And largely, it's very rare when they cancel during that twenty-five-year period.
So if, if it was made a condition of a, of a motion that you have a signed lease prior to starting construction, that would, would that be a problem for you?
No.
Another question, thirty, thirty to thirty-two inches of diameter, four carriers, everything's internal, that's, that's a tight area. So how tight is it to, when you add the carriers? And is there separate channels for the wiring to go up? How easy is it to work on? Do you have to take the panels off the side to get access to it? How, can you just explain?
Sure, it's a, it's a stealth panel, so it's a ten-foot canister called, and they have doors on them that you open and you attach equipment to. There's a center steel rod that runs through the center of the canister, and those antennas will be strapped to and connected to that steel rod in the center of the, the center of the pole.
When you, when you first build it, and it's, it's for one carrier, but you're going to have potentially three other carriers?
Right.
Will the wiring up to those other three locations be installed up front? And so all they have to do is kind of open the panel and plug and play?
No, each tenant would install their own wireless. Days gone by, there are coax cables, fatter, heavier cables. Nowadays, they're fiber thinner, thinner cables.
So panels come off, the equipment's installed, this, this looks to be a smooth surface pole.
Correct.
How do they get up there? There's not, there's not a ladder like?
A man lift, a man lift, yeah, crane.
Okay. That's all I have for now.
Okay.
Anything else? Tim?
Can I ask, in the simulations that we saw, what we see is the pole unadorned.
Unadorned, yes.
But in reality, what we're going to see particularly, and I'm quoting from the MSA report here, the proposed project will encourage the installation of additional antenna arrays, is that the pole will eventually have the cells on them.
No, it'll maintain, and that can be a condition on the, on the approval, that the pole will always maintain its stealth, which is that all the equipment, antennas, brackets will fit inside the existing canisters. So each tenant, should AT&amp;T, should T-Mobile, they'll have their own canister with their own antennas in it.
Is it right to assume that, say it's like a fifty-five gallon drum, that side of it would open up? They would open that up, they'd install their equipment and close it, screw it back down, and you're gone and all you see is the exterior gray?
Correct, that would be a very good assessment. Thank you.
Anyone else? Rebecca?
I have a question.
Sure.
So just kind of bear with me. So do you know when the two cell towers that are currently there, when those were built? Do you know what?
Years ago. I don't, I don't have that information, but they've, they were built years ago.
So the reason I'm asking the question is because that area, the Eagle Brook, and it's been pretty developed for thirty years, forty, thirty-five years maybe? So I'm just curious, the increase, I know people, like you're saying, move to, you know, no landline and all that kind of stuff. So I'm just curious why the capacity of the current towers is, is nearing the end? If there hasn't been a huge influx of development that would create this need?
Right. What, what's, yes, yes, it does make sense. In other words, you haven't doubled in population, why would the need double in this area? And the need has doubled because the usage has doubled. So the number of people can be the exact same, but the usage of the devices, the iPhones, the iPads, the computers, the data cards, that's doubled. So even though the population may have been stable, the usage has, has gone way up. Did that address it, kind of?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, and it, and it's, and it's not just here, it's throughout the network. And we don't have enough, you know, people say, well, Verizon, big company, but we don't have enough budget to build all the sites that we need. We, they're going to still find gaps, you still have dropped calls. You know, you're going to still have dropped calls in other areas, but we're trying to fight the biggest fires, and this is one that we've identified as the biggest fire.
But that's looking at calls and use that's not associated with your home Wi-Fi, correct? Because I'm asking the question.
Home Wi-Fi, those are separate networks, for sure. This is the?
Right, so with most people having home Wi-Fi?
Right.
I guess I still have the same question. How is that inundating the use of the tower?
Well, when you, when you leave your home and you have your cellphone, when you, when you're at work, when you're at?
But that's kind of transient.
Yes, hundred percent.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, and that's, and that's, and it's a commercial hub. This is a busy, busy, commercial hub in Geneva. And the problem is, is, and some may say, we don't exceed the problem yet. And, and the closest analogy I have is, you know, why do power companies need to build substations? You know, my lights go on just fine, why does a power company need a substation? They need additional capacity. And the network engineers testified that we're going to need additional capacity to serve Geneva.
Okay, thank you.
David, did you have something?
I just wanted to respond to Commissioner Moran's question regarding the affidavit. The supplemental affidavit was received on January fifth, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, David. Anything else from the commissioners? Yes, Anna?
I just got one quick question, question for the city staff that I want some clarity about the, the NEPA review. We were given two documents. One is the larger packet, which was directed to DRA properties dated April of twenty twenty-one, which says NEPA review, but then also a letter from the same consulting group directed to the city dated September twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three. That document says that it takes approximately a hundred and twenty days to get the NEPA review done. Did they have to do an updated NEPA review? Or I'm just trying to understand if the NEPA review is done.
From my understanding, another review is required?
Yeah, it is going to be an addendum to, to the original. We did the original one on the original site. We moved the location slightly. It's, I talked to the environmental engineer who did the NEPA report. He said, we'll just change out some exhibits. They do notify tribes, they notify the Indian tribes to be sure no one has a concern about the particular area. So there's some technical features they have to go, go through. Again, we wanted to go through the zoning piece first.
Thank you.
Sure.
That's all I've got.
Michael?
So that would then become a, it would have to be a condition going forward?
I guess it, it could be, if, if the commission feels necessary, yeah.
But, but they would have to do it.
It's, it's required either way.
Yes.
Thanks.
Anything else from the commission? John, I saw, yes.
Just one question for city staff. So the, the MSA report, that's a contract between the city of Geneva and that company. It was initiated by you, they're not working for the applicant.
Correct, the city, it's, yeah, it's a third-party consultant, that the city went out and, and hired.
All right, thank you.
Anything else at this time from the commissioners? Anything else at this time from the commissioners? Okay, thank you very much. We'll open up the public hearing now. Usual practice is we just go first down the list. Whoever's on the list, we just go through it. And then at the end, if you're not on the list, we give you an opportunity to speak anyway, so. But we'll do it based on the list to start. Duane Oest, I think it is? Yes, sir.
As I've read through this report and talked to Matt several times or emailed him several times, I'm a bit confused as to how this process actually got started. I'm just kind of wondering if there's like a giant...
Sir, please address me.
Comments are here.
Please address me.
If there's a giant unmet need in the Eagle Brook area for additional cell service and/or wireless service. I've lived there 26 years. If there's a survey going around, I've missed it. So I'm trying to understand what the benefits are to Geneva citizens and to the people in Eagle Brook, because we're just not seeing it, to be honest with you. The documentation in several areas talks about alleviating gaps in coverage specifically between Fargo and Fabian. And I just find it kind of amazing that all this is going to go on to improve coverage in less than a mile area. Makes me kind of wonder if there's other agendas in here. And I always think that once a cell tower gets in or a project gets approved, just kind of wonder if that's just an elephant getting his nose under the tent and whether that opens up an ongoing obligation by the city and by the people in that area to put up with something that's getting bigger and larger. And I just wonder if there's any limits that get constructed when these cell towers get up, that it's not going to expand over time. And I just wonder where the, if the city or the people who are kind of sponsoring this project can provide information on how that need was determined? Because the citizens of that area keep getting mentioned. I don't know if anybody else in the room have gotten questioned on it, but I haven't. And I wonder where the benefit is to the city. Secondly, there's some sections in there where the Geneva Comprehensive Plan says that a proposed tower would actually generate minor visual disruptions along that area. So even the review of that area says there's some, I don't know, distasteful elements that are going to be in there. And when I read that in the staff summary, I wonder who wrote it? How minor is that disruption? There's a lot of qualitative aspects in that report that should be quantitative. I don't know what minor is. I don't know the background of the people who did the summary. But I just, it's hard to draw numbers out of this thing and really hold people accountable, not just this year, but two years down the line or five years down the line. It talked about there would be a landscaping berm along Bent Tree would help screen. We've got a berm in there now and I suggest everybody take a drive-by there because it looks like something out of a third world forest. Trees are down, bushes are left to grow, they're dead, and the grass is never cut along there. So by saying that you're going to go ahead and put another berm in or fix it up, doesn't give me any warm and fuzzies, to be honest with you. My primary concern as a homeowner there is the value of the home and what's going to happen. And I read the Mark Lane report and spent 40 years in CPA and quantitative aspects of business, and I am just amazed at the quality or the lack of quality in that report. Take a look at the report, it's got several graphs in there without identifying what the Y-axis is. It's got six sites, which is an unrepresentative sample. I don't know if we've got any stats guys in the room. But six sample sites is an unrepresentative sample. Even if they were perfectly matched to that site sample, and we found six other areas around there, there's a thing called a confidence layer, level in statistics. With six sites, the best you can get is a 20% confidence level that what your projections are going forward are actually real. The subset of the ones that he picked in his report, I just don't understand how they got put into the sample. One of the six properties in there, one of them is the Fire Department of Buffalo Grove. Now, this whole aspect and the whole reason for doing the subsample to see if it's representative of what we've got here in Geneva is to make sure it's the same conditions. What he did is he picked a cell tower that went up on the Fire Department building, giant building, and then later said, well, guess what? There's been no change in housing prices. Well, no kidding, because it's on top of this giant building that's already been there for 20 years. Same thing in Morton Grove. The sampling techniques that he uses in there are just not poor, they're just terrible. And the fact that MSA would also stand along with them and verify and say, yeah, we believe in those projections is horrible. I think my suggestion would be go to Geneva High School, go into a junior or senior level stats class and have them take a look at the report. I mean, they're going to poke holes in it immediately. So it's hard to follow Lane's work. To come up with a conclusion that there will be no change in housing value flies in the face of other independent studies that have been done around the country. The National Association of Realtors and the Real Estate and Finance Economics Journal located, said that properties that were roughly a half a mile away from the tower, values declined on average of almost 2.5% and up to almost 10% once the towers went up. There are studies that are done out of Georgia and Southern Georgia University that also question what would happen to the values. And nobody addresses that. And then it gets passed along by MSA, then it gets thrown into a summary like it's fact. And it's not fact. You guys didn't do the work. You just took something, and there's sections in there, I don't know if it's been retyped in, you guys have clipped and pasted that into the staff summary. I'd expect more out of you guys. I expect you more to research a little bit. I don't know if you're working for them or if you're working for us in the city, because you're not doing your job. So if those percentage drops are correct, there's about 78 homes in that immediate area. Anywhere that 2.5% or that almost 10% drop means that individual losses can be from $12,500 to almost $50,000 per homeowner. And when you aggregate that for the 78 homes that are right in that initial area, you're talking between $1 million and $3.8 million of lost value for the Geneva homeowners. Like to go ahead and kind of dive in those statistics, but there is, it's devoid of any statistics. Mark Lane's report has nothing. MSA moved right along on that report and said they'd go along with it. And then the summary said they went along with it too, that there'd be no change. You guys don't know. They don't know. Don't go putting stuff in print by saying, yes, there'll be no change in value, because you don't know. Just two last items I want to say. There's, just to sum up, there's no benefits to the people in Geneva. Nobody in our neighborhood's going to get anything out of this deal. Does, will Geneva get any money out of this cell site? From what I understand, Matt, you've said, no, we don't, it's on private property. Yet we're spending money on consultants to review somebody else's projections to see if they're good or not. We're behind the eight ball already on this stuff. You're using my tax dollars for something that nobody in that area wants. The city gains no incomes, gains no soft benefits, and you risk the capital of the people in this neighborhood. I'm just disappointed in the fact that you guys didn't do any digging on it. You take a look at a shoddy piece of statistical work and moved along and it gets passed along like it's gospel. It's not. It's crappy statistics that are used to go ahead and develop those projections. Thank you for your time. Sorry about the colorful use of language.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I'm going to request right now, please refrain from clapping to maintain the decorum of the meeting. There may be some people here that are in favor of the cell tower. But I'm not going to debate the matter. All I'm going to ask is that please keep the decorum of the meeting so that we can have, everybody can be heard. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Point of order, I didn't catch the gentleman's name or address, so.
Yeah, it's Duane Oest, D-U-A-N-E.
Sir, can you, sir, can you come up to the podium? Apologies, thank you.
I'm sorry.
It's D-U-A-N-E, O-E-S-T, and the address is 1925 Eldorado. You want an email or a phone?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. All right, the next person we have on the list is Robert Wagner.
So Robert Wagner, 1911, Crystal Tree Court. I have prepared statements and I'm going to turn in my packet, which, and I'm going to read from this, I might add a little bit. So you'll have a copy of this that I'll turn in, okay? So excuse me for reading, but I just wanted to get through this, okay? So first of all, I want to thank you for this opportunity as a long-term resident to express my point of view on several aspects of the application and really as to why this doesn't hold any water. This is not the right proposed site for the tower. I have about four different major areas that I'm going to go through and I'll list those a little bit dogmatically. So first, I'd like to address the significance of the applicant's own alternate location table and the search ring. I think you all have that in your packet, I was going to refer to it, but if we had it in that packet, if you want to get that out now, it would probably be very helpful. I think that that table demonstrates that really the tower is incompatible with the location, so close to Nice Homes and Eagle Brook Park. There was no real attempt to actually consider alternative locations. And I'm going to go through several points on why I say that. Point number one is Verizon's RF design engineer, Mr. McDaniel, stated and certified that he created a search ring, provided it to Geneva, and that's what posted on our website. So it's point number 11. The search ring, and I quote from paragraph 11, "demonstrating the area that was appropriate for a new tower to be located in order to address the current coverage and capacity issues." Current coverage and capacity issues. So the alternate location table doesn't even mention one of the properties that's in the search ring. Walmart. Why not? Okay, I'll get to that in just a little bit. So this is because there's another inconsistency. So in addition, so with Walmart, the pre and the post simulation that was shown on page four has a point in there that says that Walmart will not be a suitable location or sufficient location to address the need of offloading traffic. And Mr. McDaniel actually certified the exact opposite by including it in the search ring. He certified that. Yet it wasn't in the table, and then we hear a comment that, well, it's not appropriate. Doesn't make sense to me. Second, the alternative location table lists a property, 2150 South Randall Road, that is outside the search ring. That's at the At Home store. Look at the search ring. It's actually inside the search ring. It also states that he contacted the property manager who wasn't interested. Why would you contact somebody if it's not in the search ring? Why would you contact a property manager and not the owner who has the ultimate decision as to whether or not he wants the lease or she wants the lease? Kind of inconsistent here. Any questions or comments on the search ring? Point number two, the alternate location table also states that the property at 1660 South Randall Road doesn't have enough space. That's the Ross store. If you look at that parking lot, pretty huge. Look at the parking lot in back of 1749 South Randall Road, not as big. You could screen the equipment with an eight-foot tower or with an eight-foot wall, just the same. You're going to see the tower just the same. It's going to rise above everything. But the alternate location table says not enough space. Okay. So he mentions that this 1749 property is a good candidate. But it's significantly smaller than the Ross stores. And I'm going to go into a little bit of a hypothesis here. So if the parking could be taken away and a trash dumpster moved, because MSA said one of the things that they might recommend is to actually create two dumpsters instead of the one and move it south pretty much to where the old location was for the tower. So now you're taking away parking spaces in a very limited area. So just consider that. If you choose to look at what MSA wrote and say, yep, we want those dumpsters moved, you're actually moving the dumpsters closer to the property line of several homes. All right. Point number three I want to make, and most importantly, is there are at least eight properties mentioned in that table where the reason the location wasn't, not a good alternative because of close proximity to residential. So the range, depending on how you look at it, is somewhere between 190 feet and let's say 700 feet. And those were not good enough because they're too close to residential. Two points. If you look at the material that's provided by, I'm not sure if it's an engineer, I don't have a copy of it, but it's 243 feet from the base station, the tower, to the home, 1915 Crystal Tree Court. What it looks like is that's to the center of the property. If you look at it to the edge of the property, which I think is the right measure, because it's affecting property value, not just a house, it's pretty close. It's actually within the range that all those other properties said too close to residential. Not sure, not sure. I do have a picture of a measurement that one of the residents took, is a digital readout that shows from that station to the edge of the property line, it's 193.8 feet. Pretty close. In fact, it's closer than anything else. Respecting the fact that it has unique visual properties, I'll get to that a little bit later, because I understand that's the counterargument to the distance. So I forgot about that. And so the park separating the site from the residence, well, I think that's a little bit misleading because everything else is framed in terms of distance. The tower is just not the site under consideration. It's not separated from the homes on Crystal Tree Court in any meaningful way. I think there are at least nine homes there. My second argument is in response to special use standard number nine, it said that all the other commercial properties in the search ring back up to residential neighborhoods, and that's a false statement. Walmart doesn't back up to residential and neither does At Home. At Home backs up to a cemetery. Walmart just backs up to, I'm not quite sure what it is, it's not residential. So I think that standard is actually not met at all. So third, in the alternate location analysis, I would have expected evidence that the search resulted in answers like a property owner saying, nope, the rent isn't enough, the terms and conditions of the lease aren't what I want, I don't want an easement on my property. We don't have any of that. We have one comment from a property manager that said, don't want it. Another comment could have been, well, the roof doesn't support it, they wanted to put this on a roof, the roof doesn't support the weight. We have none of that type of evidence. What we have is distance, that's about it. And some inconsistencies even with that. So in conclusion, for this part of the discussion on the alternate location and the table and the search ring, I think I've demonstrated the table is incomplete at best, inconsistent with the search ring, and generally poorly supported. with the search ring, and generally poorly supported. The proposed site is not appropriate. I want to be clear that I'm not suggesting that the tower be built anywhere else in the search ring. I don't think it belongs anywhere in the search ring. Couple of other points I'd like to make about the comprehensive plan, and we heard about section seven, and it provides for design objectives and guidelines, recommendations. We saw all that in public safety and access and stuff like that. Well, the main thrust of this section is the aesthetic appeal of the corridor improved for vehicular access, et cetera. Well, what's not part of the plan for Randall Road corridor is a cell tower. If you went through the process back in, I think it was in 2002, where there was a community involvement in putting together that plan, they took the community's input. Well, I'm going to submit as part of my package petition with over 245 signatures that say it's not part of what this community wants. It doesn't fit. It doesn't belong. We've actually increased that number from the last time, from back in 2001, where the number was a little bit lower. Somebody else will speak to this a little bit more directly, but we actually surveyed the new residents and added more to it. So, even the new people coming in don't want it. We heard testimony that people want it, people want it. Well, we've got people that have signed a petition that say, no, thank you. Okay? So, with all due respect, I don't think the comprehensive plan has been met here. All right, what else? I want to go through just a couple of the public comments that I submitted. I'm going to be very brief here. I don't think that that tower can be concealed at all. The antenna? Sure, you could stick it inside the tower. But the tower cannot blend into the area. And I use the word blend because that's the word that the application uses. Blend means to mix together so that you can't distinguish. You can distinguish. It's still going to be a white stick coming up out of the ground. That's what it is. It's not going to blend. It might look a little bit better. It's not going to blend, and that's the language that was used. The area Zone B5, structural maximum height of 45 feet. Again, over 245 residents in the Sound community said they're against this tower. I think the disapproval for this is just widespread. Thank you, and who do I put my submission?
Just bring it here. We'll make sure it gets in the record.
Right here.
Right here.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Are you done?
Oh, I didn't know you were done.
With some of the same pictures, I just have a different impression as to the visual appeal of that tower. And those were all from the public comments website, so I didn't think I needed to address that again, but they're in that packet as well.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, the next person on the list is Jim Wilbur, I believe.
Matt, I emailed you PowerPoint?
Was it? All I got was a Word document.
I sent the wrong one.
Yeah.
I've got it on a stick here. Is that okay?
That should be.
Sorry about that.
Backup plan.
Yeah. Oh, I've done, I've probably attached the wrong document.
Might need it.
What's that?
He's coming.
It'll be the PowerPoint. And a presentation for me.
That's, I think that's the applicant.
No, that's the...
Oh, that's yours, okay.
That's the PowerPoint.
Okay. If you need, yeah, if you need a laser pointer, if you just hold the...
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay. My name is Jim Wilbur, and I'm going to read this, and I will turn it in afterwards just so you have everything written down.
I'm sorry, sir. Could you give us your address as well?
I'm sorry?
Could you give us your address as well?
19... Yeah, that, okay.
Thank you.
But I'm going to read so I don't get off topic. So, my name is Jim Wilbur. My wife, Helen, and I have lived in our home at the corner of Crystal Tree Court and Bentree Drive for over 23 years. Our neighborhood is directly adjacent to the retail development on Randall Road. Eaglebrook is low-density, single-family housing. The area proposed for the tower is Zone B5, which allows no building greater than 45 feet in height. The backside of the store is adjacent to the berm, as well as the light poles in the parking lot are approximately 30 feet tall. There's always been a berm which obscures the view of the stores. Yeah, shoot, forgetting to do the, is this which?
If you, are you trying to change slides?
Yeah.
Just use the arrow keys on the keyboard?
Side?
On the keyboard?
Oh, on the keyboard.
Yeah, yeah.
There you go.
Okay. Okay, yeah. So, yeah, there's always been a berm which obscures the view of the stores and parking lot. A tower that is 85 feet tall will clearly be visible above the top of the trees on the berm. Photos illustrate that the adjacent retail zoning currently does not have visual impact on our neighborhood. The balloon test illustrated how much higher the proposed tower would be. Adding this so-called stealth monopole will certainly alter the character of the neighbor, or alter the character, but it will also impact the value of our house. In the last few years, there have been many factors that have had an impact on home prices. Existing home inventory has remained low, which has driven prices up. During this time, homes in desirable areas get listed, and they tend to move very quickly, often with multiple buyers bidding on them. This frequently results in the homes selling for more than the listing price. I'd like to look at one home in particular, which is in Eaglebrook. It is on, at 1841 Fargo. There's a tower which is clearly visible from the home. Here are two photos of the home. The one on the left is the photo from Realtor.com. There is no tower visible in this photo. The picture on the right was taken of the house while it was active on the market. In the Realtor.com photo, which was used to advertise the home, the tower is not visible. In the other photo, there's no way you can avoid seeing the tower. I'm fairly certain that wasn't done on accident. My next slide is a screenshot of the price history of the house while it was on the market. It's difficult to read from the PDF, so here are the details. Realtors have a tool available to them that offers an estimated sale price. This tool uses different models to estimate the selling price that could be expected if selling the home. This helps the Realtor, along with their clients, come up with the price to use when listing a home. The estimated sale price changes based on information taken from current listings and sales, so it will change as market conditions change. Since it uses different pricing models to come up with the estimate, it will give a range which you could expect at that time. This information is on the top right of the slide. It's, yeah, 541 to 644. Yeah, is what the range was at the time it was listed. The home was listed on 9/29/23 for $549,000, which is slightly above the lowest price in the range. On 10/19, it dropped to $539,900. It dropped again on November 10th to $515,000. It dropped again on November 24th to $499,900. It finally closed on January 5th of '24 for $480,000. The house was on the market for 98 days per Zenlist, and in checking with Google, as of October of '23, the average amount of time it took to sell a home was 50 days. This house took almost double the average of that time. My next slide is from the listing sheet pulled from Realtor.com. This home has a first-floor master bath, French doors, and it backs up to hole number seven on the Eaglebrook Golf Course. I looked at the photos from the listing. It is a beautiful home, other than having the cell tower behind it. This home sold for $61,000 less than the lowest number from the estimated home sale price. It was 11% less than expected at a time when many homes in desirable areas were selling very quickly for more than the listing price. Given this example located within our division, it is clear to me that this application does not meet standard for special use number two, that it will not diminish the value of adjacent property. Multiple studies have been done, which directly contradict the study commissioned by Mr. Dolan. Four papers summarizing these studies have been submitted as public comment. Three of them were done in the U.S., and one was from New Zealand. The Property Value Impact Study commissioned by Mr. Dolan makes the contention that there is no empirical evidence to suggest that proximity to a communications tower has a measurable impact, positive or negative, upon adjacent residential property values. They obviously didn't consider this home near a tower in Eaglebrook. This slide is from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and it talks about cell towers. It's taken directly from the HUD HOIC Reference Guide. It states that the appraiser is instructed to note and comment on effective marketability resulting from proximity to such hazards and nuisances. The hazards listed are high-voltage transmission lines, radio, TV transmission tower, cellphone tower, microwave relay dish, or other tower or satellite dish. If it wasn't considered to be detrimental to the value, they wouldn't refer to these items as hazards and nuisances. Tiffany Riel, a Realtor with Keller Williams in Geneva, sent in a public comment regarding the proposed tower. She included a form that is used in her office. It is the Worldwide ERC Broker's Market Analysis Form. This is used to help determine the most likely sale price. The highlighted area on the form says, "location near or in view of power lines, water towers, radio towers." I doubt the purpose of this information being included is to determine the added value based on proximity to the items that they're required to note. These items are additional evidence to support our view that this petition does not meet standard for special use number two, that it not diminish the value of adjacent nearby properties. In regard to the MSA consultant report, how is it possible to recommend approval of a special use permit that does not conform to the municipal code without verifying the structural integrity of the tower? The report speaks of a 25% minimum safety factor, and how it is unlikely the monopole will fail in a wind event. Is highly unlikely good enough? The report submitted clearly states, "The letter does not speak to the overall structural integrity of the tower when it includes the internal radio antennas and other equipment that add weight to the tower. Therefore, it is recommended by MSA that upon completion of the tower and the installation of the antenna array, that DRA or Verizon provide a structural evaluation of the tower which includes the weight of the antennas." I'm confused as how you can write a report recommending approval when they lack such critical information. I, yeah, maybe it's because they're recommending that the evaluation be done upon completion? At this point, could it be too late? What happens if it's determined that the structure will not support co-location of three carriers? Would they be forced to remove the tower after it is built? I emailed Matt Buusing with a question, questioning the diameter of the tower. He stated that, per his discussion with the applicant, it would be around 30 inches. It may vary by a couple of inches upon final design. And this is a quote from the email. Can a non-conforming special use permit be recommended without knowing this critical piece of information? Around 30 inches? If they do not know or they're not willing to share this detail, I doubt it will be less than 30 inches. If they really don't know, why not? Isn't that something that should be considered prior to the committee making any recommendation? Next slide is one of the simulated photos provided by Mr. Dolan, which is on the city website. I zoomed in on it so people can see how out of proportion a concealed pole appears when you get close to it. When you zoom in, the diameter makes it look like a smokestack. It would look, that's what it would look like. It would look like we lived next to an industrial area, which is another one of the externalities that the Worldwide ERC Broker's Analysis Report makes note of. And Bob mentioned how close the, how close it was to the house. I used a surveyor's wheel to measure to the distance from the center of the tower location to the corner of my neighbor's yard, and I measured 193 feet, eight inches. I'm sure Tony and Ruth that live in the house on the corner across from me don't want to look at it when they sit in their backyard, and we don't want to look at it from our front yard either. All the simulated pictures that are posted on the city website are taken from a distance that is greater than the distance to my front door. The diameter of the tower does make a difference with aesthetics. This is what I will be looking at, again, take, using Photoshop to put the tower in, when I look at my, out my front door. And this is why it clearly does not meet special use number five, affecting the character. The installation of the proposed tower will also include a diesel-powered backup generator. This is to power the equipment in the event of a power failure. It is recommended that this equipment be run 30 minutes every 30 days to keep it operating properly. I already hear diesel engines running on trucks when they're delivering to the stores. This will add additional noise that will affect our ability to enjoy our yard. As indicated in our public comment last week, we have invested well over $100,000 in exterior updates on our home. We, yeah, this slide has the before and after photos. We replaced synthetic stucco with brick. We added a portico to the front of the house and replaced every exterior window and door, including the garage doors. Had we considered that there was any chance that the city of Geneva would allow something like this to happen, there is no way we would have made this investment. Given all of the information being presented tonight, I think it is clear the applicant has not met standards for special use number two or number five, and the committee should make a recommendation to the city that this petition be denied on these grounds. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, 1916 Crystal Tree Court.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm not speaking, but I'm giving my talking time.
Okay, Dale?
I'll try to turn this light on.
On the right side?
I've never seen it on.
Don't see it.
It looks like it's wired up, but I've never seen it on, actually. I mean, I have it. I'm just being honest.
Makes it easy.
Okay. It looks like it's ready to go, but...
No, no. I'll figure something out. Okay. Well, good evening. My name is Dale Raffundy. My wife Karen and I live on, at 1909, Crystal Tree Court. We've been residents here for over 29 years. I got several comments related to the Verizon Tower. First one's related to the neighborhood petition. The petition is signed by the current residents from the 136 homes on the southwest side of the Eaglebrook subdivision, all streets connected to Bentree. The results show 100% of the homes on Crystal Tree Court on or adjacent to Bentree Street, and the homes on Eldorado Drive that are directly behind the homes on Crystal Tree Court are all opposed, including 96% of the homes around Eaglebrook Park are opposed. Overall, 93% of the total current homeowners on the southwest side have signed a petition to not build a cell tower at this location, including existing Verizon customers. This clearly shows that the vast majority of the Eaglebrook residents closest to the proposed site consider this a major visual impact and impacts the character of their neighborhood. My second comment, participants speaking... My second comment, participants speaking here are considered sworn testimony and affirmed tell the truth. Therefore, any information provided to the city and its residents from Mr. Dolan and Verizon must always be credible to make an important decision when it comes to city ordinances. Geneva zoning code requires a five-year future facility plan within the city limits. Per the approved minutes from the June 10, 2021 Planning and Zoning Committee meeting, Mr. Dolan stated, and the documents show, that Verizon supplied the following text on June 1, 2021, "To respond to the requirement of a five-year plan," and I'll quote, "Verizon plans no additional cell sites in the city of Geneva within three to five years." It was also stated that network design engineers' forecast tools look out three years. What we now learn from the Verizon Swan, Oscar Swan application was that Verizon already had Oscar Swan in its plans sometime prior to January 20, 2021, which is a date when the field survey for the Oscar Swan property was completed by Terra Consulting Group for the Verizon Monopole Tower. That was prior to our Planning and Zoning Committee meeting in June.
Sir, we're gonna let legal tell you something.
The Oscar Swan petition is not relevant for tonight's hearing for a lot of reasons.
No, what's relevant is the applicant is the same.
I understand what you're trying to do, and I appreciate what you're trying to do, but for purposes of this record, Oscar Swan and that whole petition is irrelevant for what's before this body.
Okay. All right, so Geneva zoning code requires proof that the proposed site is essential to meet the service demands of the geographic area. That is, the site versus other options and locations is absolutely necessary. Per the minutes from the June 10, 2020 Planning and Zoning Committee meeting, Mr. Dolan stated the two existing cell sites were breaking, the sectors were breaking, and at capacity as confirmed by Verizon. That's a quote. Previous Verizon summary slide stated exhausted neighboring towers. Mr. Dolan also stated growth is exponential, again, with tools looking out three years. This is despite Geneva population declining since it peaked in 2017 and a fact sheet I'll submit showing a plateau of cellphone ownership since 2021. Well, here we are, three years later, and nothing broke. And now the same Verizon engineer is saying they're just nearing capacity. And the summary slide no longer says exhausted towers. Without any evidence to the contrary, I would argue that the capacity need has even declined in this area. So why is there no evidence of gaps or evidence of dead spots? Why does Mr. Dolan and Verizon state the tower is needed for faster 4G? That was on the summary slide that was just shown. When it's the addition of the 5G ultra-wide band, which they referred to as C-band in the material that was submitted, it's already on all the towers, and that's what makes it faster. We've had 4G LTE here for 10 years. It doesn't change. 5G is what's faster. This brings into question the accuracy of the statements being made again by Mr. Dolan and Verizon regarding the real need for a tower versus other preferred options. In 2021 and now, Mr. Dolan and Verizon did not submit any capacity utilization graphs and sites from any of the sites in the area, north or south, has not shown any evidence of exponential growth that was to occur or soon to occur in the area. If the towers were hitting capacity since 2021, and I quote, "The user would incur a dropped call," as Jesse indicates in his affidavit, the Verizon engineer. And if this was the case, Verizon would be able to show an increase in the drop call rates over time, especially during busy hours. Without real evidence, the city does not know if the capacity issue is even genuine. I'll submit an example case where a higher court from New Jersey that denied Verizon because the decision claimed Verizon Wireless didn't provide enough evidence to show the boost in cellphone coverage would be significant enough to offset the significant harm to the residential neighborhood and the local zoning plan. And the court said Verizon Wireless had not fairly considered alternate technologies that might prevent the need to place a tower at that location. My fourth comment about the tower locations. So why is this the best location so close to existing homes? Why did Verizon go so far out of the search ring at Oscar Swan, so close to existing homes? Why did Mr. Dolan ignore Walmart commercial area farther from the existing homes when it's in within the Verizon search ring? A fact sheet I will submit tracking mobile phone use since 2018 indicates there has been a steady decline of those who use smartphones as their primary means of online internet at home. Here, Geneva residents already have high-speed home broadband internet service. When you enter your house, your smartphone connects to in-home Wi-Fi, same as your tablet or your television set in the house. And it uses a more reliable wired solution, which when you walk in the house, immediately offloads the data to the Verizon Tower. It's now going through a different infrastructure. Verizon needs to position more cell towers with higher frequency 5G signals closer to residents' homes to better support their in-home internet product. And by the way, you don't even need to have a phone with this infrastructure. You just put a router in your house, a Verizon router. So this is a new source of revenue, given that cellphone growth is basically tapped out. This need is met when Verizon selects locations closer to established neighborhoods like Oscar Swan or here near Eaglebrook. Verizon benefits from more cell towers to deliver their 5G to homes to compete with cabled home internet we already have from AT&amp;T, Comcast, and MetroNet. You see advertisements from Verizon, they say, and I'll quote, "Ditch cable and switch to Verizon home internet." This Verizon pincushion approach for home internet is not what Geneva needs. My fifth comment, Verizon's engineer Jesse McDaniel mentioned an alternative option unknowingly in his own affidavit. First, he states small cells are designed to supplement a macro cell tower, such as the one being proposed. But note, they can also supplement an existing macro cell tower, like Verizon has been doing for many years. All the on-air and proposed Verizon towers have the exact same frequency range on all of them. See the table in the submitted coverage analysis document. Basically means there's no difference between the existing tower and the one being proposed. They all have the same frequency ranges on them. Then second, he mentioned, "It would take approximately 20 small cells to handle the coverage capacity needed in this area." Told you, straight out. And he says, "Small cells are designed to only cover an area of approximately 200 feet." That's correct. That's what they were designed for. So that sounds right. Verizon claims to have more small cells than anyone else in the United States and states they're already up and running in many communities, blending with the environment, so they know how to deploy them without interference. They've been doing it for 10 years. Mr. Dolan's response states, "Small cells is best used in high-rise densely populated urban centers with natural obstructions." In contrast, if you go to Verizon.com, it states, "Small cells can be used where demands are highest, such as shopping centers." We have Randall Square and Geneva Common Shopping Centers and nearby traffic on Randall Road with plenty of poles 25 to 35 feet high and 150, 300 feet apart, whereby small cells could be used to offload the north and south towers if offloading these towers was the objective. Finally, I'll submit page nine of 12 pages from Geneva's previous city planner's staff analysis on ranked alternatives that did not satisfy the zoning ordinance requirement, whereby Mr. Dolan responded the exact same way again, that didn't fulfill the requirement before. It's time for Verizon to look at other alternatives like small cells and/or rooftop base stations if there's really a 911 or qual coverage issue to address. Thanks for your time.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, next person on the list is, I believe it's Cheryl Reese, R-E-I-S.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
No, I can't.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Cheryl Reese. I live at 1849 Eldorado Drive. I'm opposed to the Verizon cell tower for many reasons. The primary reason is that it will forever damage the character of our Eaglebrook neighborhood. My husband Dan and I bought our home 23 years ago because we were attracted to the charm and character of Geneva, because of the walkable neighborhood, open space, and neighborhood park. The question I ask you tonight to consider is who benefits from this proposal? Certainly not the homeowners in this neighborhood. My husband Dan, since we heard of this second proposal, have traveled the neighborhood. We have walked in the neighborhood and talked to our neighbors. Not one person has said, "Ooh, great idea." Every single family member that we have spoken to say, "Where do I sign this petition?" Not one person has said, "I don't have fast enough cell service or strong enough cell service." Every person we have spoken to are concerned about the impact of the character on the neighborhood and the surrounding park and the homes that are literally across the street. If anything, the concerns our neighbors have voiced is that their home values will only decline if this cell tower were to be built. Who benefits? Certainly not the city of Geneva. I confirmed with our city planner that Geneva does not gain any financial benefit, whether through leasing this land or from taxes that are somehow accrued through the cell tower. There was a saying that was made popular in the 1976 docudrama called All the President's Men. Those of you who are of a certain age, myself included, will remember that this pertained to the Watergate scandal. There's a famous scene in that movie where Robert Redford, who plays Bob Woodward, he was the reporter that was meeting with his undercover contact. The undercover contact whispered, "Follow the money." Now, in this case, he was implying that political corruption could be brought to light by examining money transfers between parties. Just follow the money to see who benefits. In our case with this proposal, if we follow the money, it's actually quite obvious. And ironically, there's really nothing secretive or clandestine about it. The only one who benefits is Mr. Dolan and his real estate company. In the spirit of collaboration, however, I believe for Mr. Dolan's sake, there are many viable alternative sites surrounded by commercial zoning, not just on three sides. I seem to recall in one of the documents that we talk about how this proposal is technically in a commercial site, surrounded on three sides by commercial property, but then the benefit is because it faces the park. So look for a site that is truly surrounded in a commercial property, not on three sides, that will so drastically impact the surrounding residential neighborhood. There's simply no positive benefit for the city of Geneva to approve this proposal at 1749 South Randall Road. I respectfully ask you to reject this proposal for the sake of the homeowners, the taxpayers of Geneva, and the character of our Geneva neighborhood. Thank you very much.
All right, I'm a reader. I gotta read mine. Thank you for having me. My name is Dan Reese, and I live at 1849 Eldorado Drive. 23 and a half years ago, my wife and I were discussing the different models that our builders offered in Eaglebrook, which we could customize. He mentioned a couple things about the appearance of our home. We could choose the same basic design as another house near. However, the brick must be a different color. The elevation above the garage must be different. The cedar and trim must be different colors than any homes near us with the same design. We were also given a document called the Declaration of Covenants, Restrictions, and Easements, Eaglebrook Country Club Subdivision during our closing. This document was filed by Joe Keim to develop the land and is on record with the city of Geneva and Kane County. Everyone who has built or has bought a home in Eaglebrook is given this document or is informed of this document. The purpose of this document is to ensure proper use and appropriate development and improvement of the subject property and every part thereof to protect each owner therein from such improper use of surrounding lots as may depreciate the value of their property, to guard against the erection of buildings built to improper design, size, or unsuitable materials to prevent haphazard and inharmonious improvements, and in general, to provide adequately for a residential subdivision of the highest quality and character. Some of the haphazard and inharmonious improvements stated in the document are accessory buildings or storage sheds, above-ground swimming pools, commercial truck or recreational vehicle parking unless in garage, no animals other than pets may be kept, no play structures may be installed other than out of cedar, or no television or radio towers or large antennas of any type used for transmitting signals shall be located or utilized on the properties in Eaglebrook's subdivision. In other words, nothing that would be considered eyesores and admire the views from our homes. We, along with many other residents, choose to live in Eaglebrook in part because of the general restrictions, Article Four, put in place to preserve the character of our neighborhood. When residents purchased the property in Eaglebrook and they were given and adhered to a declaration of covenants with a general purpose defined in Article Two to protect each owner from such improper use of surrounding lots as may depreciate the value of their property and in general, to provide adequately for a residential subdivision of the highest quality and character. So how is the above relevant? We believe that the character of our Eaglebrook neighborhood extends to the commercial side of Bent Tree Drive and that there is a berm and trees that buffer us from the stores that exist there, which was all built by the original developer. The owners of the land have not properly maintained the grass nor the berm, and many trees have died and fallen over without being replaced. The city of Geneva agrees with us, and that has become an eyesore, and that can be remedied and is in the planning stage. and is in the planning stages to make improvements to the tree berm so that it's not an eyesore to the Eaglebrook residents and surrounding community. It's in the budget. If the city agrees with us homeowners that the above is an eyesore, what is an 85-foot tower? An 85-foot cell tower, concealed or not, should be categorized as an eyesore and not within the character of our neighborhood. There is also legal precedence for what I state. In Omni Point Communications Incorporated versus the city of Nashua, the Nashua Zoning Board denied the special exception to construct a wireless tower on the grounds that the tower would impair the integrity or be out of character with the immediate neighborhood where it is to be located. Omni Point filed suit in the U.S. District Court. The court found that the specific testimony of neighbors concerning the impact on their property and the neighborhood in general constituted substantial evidence that the proposed tower would be out of character with the surrounding neighborhood visually, aesthetically, and functionally. The court granted summary judgment in favor of the zoning board. Given this major visual impact to the existing neighborhood, the Planning and Zoning Commission should deny the request based on the applicant not meeting Special Use Standard Number Five as an 85-foot tower would adversely change the character of the residential area. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm going to turn in a copy of what I just said. I don't have a copy of the whole thing, but I have of germane pages that I mentioned, and I've also got a summary of the court case.
Okay. Matt will take it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Next person on the agenda here is Don Manikas. Sorry, I'm sure I brutalized that last name.
So I'm Don Manikas.
Not bad, of course.
My wife and I have lived in Geneva for over 30 years, and we've lived in our house at Eaglebrook for over 20. I'm also a member of the Geneva Park District Foundation Board, which I've been for over 20 years, and a practicing real estate attorney for over 30 years, just by way of background. I do want to talk about the study and the impact on property values, but before I get to that, I can't help but comment on the appearance. And being on the park board, I'm just amazed and impressed by the city staff, by the people in the park district, by members, and all the effort that goes into beautifying the parks. Our mission is to help do that, to plant trees, and I could tell you the time spent deciding what trees to plant and which ones will provide the best shade and the best appearance and where they should go is a focal point that always amazes me. So when I looked at the balloon test and saw the 85-foot pole thing, it was disheartening. I mean, I looked at it personally from different vantage points. I also looked at pictures. I would say Mr. Dolan might need a little better camera because it is an eyesore. It doesn't look good, and I was disheartened as a member of the park district board. It doesn't fit in the character. The concept of having that right across the street from a thriving park is a travesty, really. Onto the property value concept. I'm gonna sort of read. Some people stole my thunder a little bit, so I'm gonna kind of read and mix and match here a little bit, but the issue is whether the cell tower will impact property values. And I don't think there's really any dispute. The studies show that, and common sense and logic shows, that the existence of those cell towers will impact property values for nearby property owners. And I understand Mr. Dolan had to try to address it, so they submitted an appraisal from Mark Lane and Associates, but in all honesty, I don't think that in good faith even legitimately tries to deal with the standard. The standard is whether it diminishes property. What the appraisal attempts to do is it compares on a square footage, price per square footage basis, three different segments and six different properties as far as what the sales price on recent sales was. And, you know, the fact of the matter is comparing the value of one stack of homes from here to here, that doesn't tell you anything about whether the cell tower is going to impact a property owner right across the street from it. There are so many factors that go into determining a home's value, and we know some of them that relate to the physical condition. Are the kitchens updated? Are the bathrooms modernized? Are hardwood floors a finished basement, all that stuff? The appraisal doesn't even attempt to get into any of those things, obviously, so we don't know anything about that. In fact, we don't know anything about any of the properties that are the subject of the appraisal. The only thing we really know is the distance that they are from a cell tower. But there's so many factors that go in even beyond the physical things, and the lane study doesn't even attempt to do it. All it does is compare the various values on a square footage basis. Some of the things that it doesn't consider, for example, is timing. We all know it's critical to know exactly when various sales took place. To compare the timing of sales, we can probably all give examples of somebody who just made or missed a hot market, and I personally could give you several examples from some of my clients who experienced, in some cases, 10% changes in value in 30 days or over 20% in six months. The appraisal that was submitted doesn't even attempt to analyze the timing of the various transactions. But that is such a significant factor. Similarly, the appraisal doesn't deal with any benchmark comparisons. I think a couple people have mentioned that you need to consider things like the listing prices. What are the listing prices for the homes? How do they compare to the estimated values of those properties? There's so many Reese's out there now that will tell you what the estimated value is. What are those properties listed at? And then, what are they sold for? How many price reductions were there? These are things that really relate to the issue, which is, does the cell tower diminish the value of a given residence? Comparing different residences doesn't get there. If every house in the area is selling for 10% over the list price, but homes close to the cell tower are selling for 5% less than the listing price, well, you have a clear indication that the cell tower is impacting the value. But Mr. Lane doesn't even consider that. He also doesn't consider any of the physical similarities or differences or any of the details of the surrounding areas. We have six random areas, Buffalo Grove, Algonquin, et cetera, but we don't know anything about those properties, the style of the homes, the models, the builders, the ages, the views from the various things. Somebody mentioned that one of them was on a fire department building. He didn't get into analyzing any of those types of details, which are critical to the He gives us an example, although he doesn't use it in the six, like he mentions the Geneva Water Tower, and shows that the Geneva Water Tower value are dramatically higher. The closer to the water tower you get, the properties are significantly higher. All that does is show that his approach is missing the mark. The fact of the matter is, the tower's not what's the selling point. Being closer to the tower doesn't increase the values. It's other factors that he hasn't taken into account, and he doesn't even attempt to describe or analyze in the appraisal. He also doesn't discuss when the towers were put in. Were the homes sold in the middle of this process, before, after? For all we know, some of the homes could have been sold before and others after. He provides information in there in each of the areas, in the .1-mile radius, he has a smaller number of homes and dramatically higher in the other two categories. He doesn't explain, "Does that impact? Are the numbers diluted based on that?" In some cases, for example, in Buffalo Grove, I noticed that only one of the, in the first category of homes, only one of the homes was attached and five were detached, so 16%. But in the other, in the .2 radius, 42% of the homes were attached, and it was 66% in the third range of homes. What impact does that have on his analysis? He doesn't even attempt to explain it or attempt to analyze it. He simply ignores it and just goes off of the random sales numbers that he has, and those numbers don't mean anything when you don't have, when the only factor you have is the distance, and you're ignoring all of the other factors. We all know that even two homes that were completely identical, same size, same model, same location, same date of sale, could have different property, you know, could have different sales prices if one was poorly maintained and the others had significant improvements and renovations to the inside. But we don't know anything. We don't know anything about any of those factors because Mr. Lane doesn't explain. He just takes the raw data of the sales price, uses the distance, and then draws the conclusion that cell towers don't impact value. The truth is this, is that that approach, the price per square foot comparison, doesn't address the issue of diminishment in value. The approach is flawed. There's too many factors that go into it. If you look at his six or seven, you know, four of the six or five of the seven different properties that he looks at, you see that the properties that are closest to the tower are actually higher in value than the other ones. We all know that doesn't make sense. I mean, just logically, as a real estate attorney with 30's experience, I can tell you, it's not credible. That conclusion defies logic and common sense in reality, and it demonstrates the shortcomings of the price per square footage analysis. No serious person would assert or believe that the tower, that homes closest to the tower will benefit an increase in value from that. Obviously, the tower is not an ocean view. It's not a park. It's not a golf course. It's not something that's going to improve value. I think it's clear the reason that the appraisal doesn't address any of the other factors is he doesn't want to do it. If you analyze the full data, you're going to find out that cell towers do affect value. In looking at this over the last few weeks, I had a chance to talk to a few clients. One of them was a developer and just raised the concept generally, and his response was, "Of course, it goes without saying that cell towers affect value. If you go into a new subdivision, you're going to see, we have our base prices for lots, then we might have premium lots that are cul-de-sac lots or lots on a golf course over the lake view or whatever, and then if you have a cell tower lot, that's going to be a reduced price lot." It's just generally accepted that cell towers do impact value. I also had a chance to talk to a real estate agent, a client of mine, and same thing, you know, they look at you like, it's universally accepted that cell towers impact value. And some of the rationale is, for starters, curb appeal. Everybody knows that when you go to buy a property, curb appeal and your first impression is critical. Realtors spend significant effort right up front trying to get everybody to spruce up their outside to get it so that the appearance draws people to it. If you have a cell tower by your house, there's a chance people are not even going to stop. They're not even going to get out of their cars. And if they do stop, as a couple people have indicated, they now have the leverage because you're working at a disadvantage selling a home directly across from a cell tower. Another point is that it's indisputable, I think, that the existence of a cell tower reduces the number of potential buyers. Some buyers don't like the aesthetics. Some buyers may not like things that we can't talk about at this hearing, and some buyers are concerned about potential resale value. For that, I'll just look at his very own language. In the report, Mr. Lane says, "It's a common perception that the presence of communications towers proximate to residential properties will result in a negative impact to resale values of such properties." That's a perception. That's going to stop people from pursuing those opportunities. So in that case, the perception is reality. When you have a lower potential buyer pool, it's a fact that you are going to get less action. You're not going to get to take advantage of hot markets. You're not going to get to negotiate. You're going to lose leverage there, and you're going to end up with lower property sale numbers. The, again, I think a few people have mentioned, when you have that, you're going to start at a disadvantage because your list price is probably going to be less than the estimated value, and then you're going to end up selling for a lower percentage of the list price than surrounding homes or, you know, homes that are away from the tower who don't have to deal with that. Ultimately, what I think Mr. Lane tried to do was just take some statistics, sort of smoke and mirrors, just sort of, if you take enough properties, you can show that there's not a significant difference, especially when you don't analyze any of the information. And he uses those statistics to draw just a crazy conclusion. It reminds me, when I was starting out in practice, one of my mentors, in a similar issue, talking about statistics in use for property values, said, and I'm going to paraphrase a little bit here, but he said, "You know, in 1954, there weren't any Elvis impersonators. In 1956, after Elvis got started, there were maybe 25 impersonators nationwide. By 1958, there was 1,000 Elvis impersonators, and by 1960, there were over 20,000 Elvis impersonators." Statisticians estimated that by the year 2020, 80% of the U.S. population would be an Elvis impersonator." That's kind of what Mr. Lane did here. He took these facts, he just comparing values of properties without any basis, just just taking one single aspect of it, how far they were from the cell tower, ignoring everything else. And as we see, there's so many other factors that go into it. He didn't care about that. He used that and then just concluded, cell towers don't impact value. That's not the way it works. I don't think it was, it was actually a genuine, honest attempt to do it. I think it was just trying to throw something up to try to hit the, you know, meet the standard. But I think we all know better than that. I think we all know that cell towers do affect value. And if you want to get a special use, you got to try to show that they don't. And maybe they can't. Maybe it's impossible to show that they, you know, don't diminish value. But I think you got to try, and I don't even think this was a good faith effort. They just ignored everything. So in my opinion, based on my experience, I don't think the appraisal even remotely comes close to meeting the standard of demonstrating that homes, that the cell towers don't affect the properties of homes nearby and adjacent homes. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next. Do you have something to submit? It's all right. Okay, yep, that's fine. Thank you, sir. Okay, next person on here is Emily McCafferty.
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Can you hear me?
I can.
Awesome. Okay, my name is Emily McCafferty. I live at 2089 Eldorado Drive. And I will be addressing the special use standard number two, so property values. We're going to continue talking about this. And the purpose of this presentation is to try to pinpoint the property value impact this proposed cell tower would have within our specific neighborhood of Eaglebrook. Mr. Lane's study did not address this. Why not? Why did he not look at the properties within Eaglebrook? We have cell towers. Our analysis represents a common sense approach to this based on publicly available information. There are a number of published studies. I brought them with me. I think I also shared them with you, Matt. They've been conducted on this topic. These are, again, published studies. All of them show a clear decline in value ranging from 7.6 all the way up to 20% for homes located closest to cell towers, with that decline starting to dissipate as you move further away from cell towers. And that dissipation range varies between studies from 1,000 feet up to a half a mile away. Now, there are also smaller scale studies that have been conducted by appraisers like Mr. Lane that attempt to show this, to show the opposite. But these small scale studies are flawed and they're universally commissioned by companies like Verizon. So how do we know what to believe? And most importantly, how can we predict what will happen to property values within Eaglebrook if this tower goes in? Well, luckily, we have that data. Eaglebrook is the only neighborhood within Geneva with adjacent cell towers located nearby. There are three towers in total, two of which were grandfathered in before the neighborhood was built in the 80s, and one that was built in the early 2000s. In terms of metrics, we'll be comparing the distance from each home to the closest cell tower with sales data, more specifically, the estimated home value at the week of listing and the price each home sold for. In terms of sources, we pulled property listing information from Zenlist. The distance from the cell towers for each individual home was measured within Google Maps Satellite View. And for the estimates at time of listing, the average was taken between CoreLogic and Collateral Analytics. These are both automated valuation tools. We collected this data from all of the homes that were sold within Eaglebrook between 2021 and 2024. So a bull market when it comes to real estate. This map shows where all of these homes were located within correlation to those three towers. So we're going to first take a look at the data behind those three homes that are closest to the towers in the middle of the slide there. So we're going to compare two methods here. And you can really see a stark difference between this. On the left-hand side is what we get when we only compare price per square foot. It appears that the home on the very left, 1853 Fargo, is faring the worst at the lowest price per square foot. Totally disregard the years sold because that's a whole other argument. While the home on the right, 1841 Fargo, appears to be faring the best with the highest price per square foot. On the right-hand side, this is the approach that we're going to take. We have the same homes broken out by sale price, value estimate, and list price. When you look at this version, the story completely flips. 1841 Fargo on the very right fared the worst with the largest decline between the value estimate, which is that middle blue bar, and the sale price, which is that dark blue bar on the left. And there were four price drops after listing. While 1853 Fargo on that left-hand side fared the best with the lowest decline. Now let's zoom in and take a look at all of the data for Eaglebrook during this time period. These bars are sorted by distance from the nearest tower. And they include all of the homes that fall within these distance categories, up to past a mile from the nearest tower. Now, we only have one home that happens to fall within that 0 to 0.1 mile range, which equates to around 530 feet. But you can see that we have nine homes that fall in that next closest category. And these are showing an average estimated loss of 1%. Now, that 1% may not seem like a large amount at first glance. But when you factor in the 3% gain that the homes around a quarter of a mile and away and beyond, this loss really equates to 4%. They are not gaining in value the same that the other homes have been over the past three to four years. And then if you add that 3% to that 14% in that first home, it loses 17%. What this tells us is that in our neighborhood, the homes furthest from cell towers were generally able to command a higher price than their value. While the homes closest were not only able, were not able to reap those same benefits in a hot market. They also lost value on top of this. Based on this chart, we can draw parallels back to those official studies. We see the same patterns within our own neighborhood, Eaglebrook. The homes closest to towers lose with a dissipating decline up to around a quarter of a mile. So how do we know that this is not just a one-off trend within Eaglebrook? Well, that's where the Wheaton data comes in. To confirm what we were finding within Eaglebrook, we also collected data up to half a mile away from the nearest towers from three neighborhoods within Wheaton. All of these neighborhoods were selected on purpose because of their similarities to Eaglebrook. They are custom-built homes, similar sizing, similar price points, and one of the same developers, Kime. The first two neighborhoods, Arrowhead and Legends of Wheaton, are both situated near the same cell tower. And you can see that in the bottom left-hand corner there. Denada East is the third Wheaton neighborhood. Again, many similarities with Eaglebrook. You can look at the pictures and you think, that looks like Eaglebrook. This neighborhood has two cell towers located in the surrounding area, one a bit closer to homes and one around half a mile away. So when compared to our data from Geneva, specifically Eaglebrook, the Wheaton homes' data show the exact same patterns of loss and gain in proximity to towers. This is an overall view of all the homes sold in each of these four neighborhoods, grouped again by distance from nearest cell tower. You can clearly see that the Wheaton homes closest to cell towers also experienced a loss at closing in comparison to their estimated value. With that impact, again, dissipating the further away you move from towers. And again, the homes further away are reaping those rewards of the hot real estate market that we've been experiencing. So let's do another quick zoom in here to these specific areas that I highlighted on this slide, the gray parts. So yeah, that first light gray box on the left-hand side, these represent the homes within 700 feet, all of them. Again, Wheaton included with Geneva data. So again, yeah, these are all the individual homes that made up this data. This grouping of homes was the most likely to experience a loss at closing. There are nine homes here. Seven out of the nine lost at the sale. So they basically were not able to sell as much as their value. So look at the opposite side, half a mile away, it totally flips. The data, yeah, it completely flips. There are 15 homes on this slide. 13 out of the 15 homes sold above their value with one home losing 1% and one home selling right at its value. That's a very clear pattern here. In closing, I'd like to talk about, I think one of my neighbors already brought this up, so I won't spend too much on this. But if you kind of take that data that we have, that we know that the homes within Eaglebrook lose this amount in general, again, estimated percentages here, and you apply that to the homes that are 700 feet within this proposed tower, they are highlighted in that dark blue, as well as that dissipating decline in value, we're going to say 4%. Again, pulling from those slides on Eaglebrook in the beginning. This averages $68,875 lost for household for those homes closest to the tower and $26,348 lost per household for those homes within 701 and a half mile with a total predicted loss of $3,292,564. Again, average estimates, but that is why this room is packed here tonight. This is what these residents stand to lose and what the city of Geneva stands to lose to the benefit of Mr. Dolan and the benefit of Verizon. This tower belongs in an industrial or commercial area that is not closely surrounded by residential homes. Placing this tower away from residential areas benefits everyone. The city of Geneva can stop dealing with this headache over and over. Dolan gets paid, Verizon gets its tower, and residents get to keep their property values. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Thank you. Next person is Helen Wilber.
Yes.
You're passing. Next person on the list is Janice Mullen. No additional comments. Next person is, I believe it's Daryl. No comment? Stu. Annie Beal?
No additional comments.
Doug Dolan. He's the applicant. Sorry. I always, did you mention the applicant? I think I said Dave. That's crossed out, so that's not there. Sandy Hess? Nancy Henson? Yeah. John Hess? Dan Davis?
No comments.
Susan Stark? Matt Zanasis? I'm sorry. I think I got that. Yeah.
Matt Zaxis, 2041 Arrowhead Court. I'll go quick, I know it's late. So I think a lot's been said here today. I think, you know, I'm thinking back to three years ago when we did this. One thing that's still the same is we still haven't heard directly from Verizon on different options. You know, you look at Verizon, I dropped some of these facts last time that we went through this. But last year, Verizon did $134 billion. They had an 8.7 profit margin. They're a very profitable company. They've got a lot of money. We talked about small cells. You need 20 to fill up the space. A third of the space is in the middle of a swamp. Of course, you're not going to put small cells there. If all of the traffic that's going up and down Randall Road, and we've got all these different commercial areas that have, that are using cell service, you can put small cells up and down Randall Road. It probably costs more, right? What Dolan's trying to do is build the Costco and build a big tower. So my point is, is that there's other areas to focus, right? Verizon has a lot of money. There's other ways to solve this problem. They looked at an 85-foot tower, different areas that you could put it. We have reasons why you can't put it in certain places. Why can't you build a shorter tower? Why can't you put a tower on top of the Ashley Furniture Store that's concealed? No one can see it. It's right on top of the building. Cell phone towers are on top of buildings all over the place. You go into any city and you look around, you can see the little pieces of equipment all over different buildings. We don't need an 80-foot, 5-foot tower to solve the problem. There's other ways to solve the problem. It might, it might take more money. It might take more financing to make it happen. But ultimately, that's up to Verizon to figure out. It's not, it's not on the homeowners, on the community, to have to deal with the eyesore that this tower will bring. There's other ways to solve the problem. And I don't believe that all of those different possibilities have been explored. We're still focused on building an 85-foot tower. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next person is Linda Cersei. Yeah?
Hi, I'm Linda Cersei and I live at 1659 Kime Circle. And I don't really have anything to add. I think the group has done a really great job of expressing views, not only held by the immediate neighborhood, but we are more embedded in Kime Circle and have the same concerns. We all share the same neighborhood and we all have the same aligned interest in keeping the aesthetics nice and keeping property values up. I do have a petition with 41 signatures just in my immediate neighborhood. Every home I went to, everybody universally was just like, yes, let me have that. I don't want another cell tower in the neighborhood. We already have quite a few. We feel like it already kind of takes away from the aesthetics of our neighborhood. If you aren't familiar with it, you should drive through it and you should see them at night just out of the front of my house. There's a huge tower that's lit up, looks like airplanes are landing in our neighborhood. I don't know how all that passed without the neighborhood coming together and trying to fight that. But it happened and they're there. And we all universally do not want any more cell towers. We're concerned about our neighbors' loss of value, loss of revenue for the city, what that means to property taxes for all of us, and just the quality of our neighborhood. And I keep hearing people say there's a buffer And I keep hearing people say there's a buffer between where this is going to be and the neighborhood, and I guess I just don't see that. I consider the road part of the neighborhood, I consider the burn part of the neighborhood, and I consider this location a budding the neighborhood, not buffering it. So I'm a little confused by that terminology. And as far as the appraisal too, I spent 35 years in real estate finance, most recently as a CFO, COO of a private equity real estate group, and I know what appraisals mean. They're very easily influenced to be kind of what they need to be, depending on who's engaging the appraisal and what the ultimate goal is. So I don't put a lot of credence or credence in that. I can't tell you how many times we needed an appraisal to come in at a certain number, and it either came in below that and we argued for it to come up, and it did, or it came up crazy high and we were like, oh my gosh, I don't know how they got there, but we just got a loan. And I've been in that industry as far as providing loans to real estate developers, acquiring real estate, and also making investments in real estate with joint ventures. So I'm just, from a practical standpoint, I think everyone who spoke previously did a really good job with all their stats and all their information and research. But just as a person, a layperson, all of us here are homeowners. You are not going to be interested in a home where you've got eyesore, like a cell tower, out of the front of your house or out the back of your house. You're going to think twice about it, and you're certainly going to, if you're even interested in living there, you're going to want a discount for that. So it just doesn't make sense to me to say there's no loss in value. So anyway, that's all I had to say, and I just wanted to represent the rest of the neighborhood that is not within this 500-foot parameter, but certainly affected and concerned about what our neighbors are being asked to allow. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Next person on the list is Amy Went? Next is Mohammed?
No comments.
Lauren Swor?
Pass.
Pass? And then Kristy Mansfield?
She left.
She left. Okay, that is the complete list. Is there anyone else present who wishes to testify? You've already testified, sir, so you don't get a second shot. Yes, ma'am. Were you present to be sworn in?
I was here to be sworn in.
Please stand, please. Do you silently swear a testimony you're about to give, is the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right.
Hi, good evening. My name is Amanda Driscoll. I am not a resident of the Eaglebrook neighborhood, but I am a resident and a small business owner of Geneva. So I apologize for not having anything prepared. I found out about this meeting yesterday evening and I decided it was necessary I came. So I wasn't planning on talking, but after hearing Eaglebrook residents and their cases and comments, I thought it would be nice for me to comment additionally from a new homeowner perspective. So I was home searching in the heat of the pandemic, 2021. I ended up closing on my home in Geneva in May, so just over three years ago. And I can't tell you how many homes that I passed up because I checked all the boxes, and then as you drove up to the home, there was a massive cell tower within visual distance of the house. I didn't even step inside the house, it was immediately off the list. So coming into Geneva, I was thoroughly impressed with the lack of cell towers in the residential areas and even the commercial areas. And quite frankly, it's what helped me make my decision to pay $30,000 over my original budget for my home to purchase in Geneva, because it checked all the boxes on paper and in person. So that's, I know I'm just an N of one, and this is my own personal story, but I just wanted to represent the new home buyers in a time where cell towers are popping up left and right in residential and commercial areas. And to, to a population of some of us, it's actually very important that cell towers are not in residential areas and we're not viewing them from our homes and not being exposed to them. So that's my story, and to add to that, I was raised with a mother who chose a career as a broker, and her perfect clientele is new home buyers. And so for 23 years, I listened to her talking to her clients and encouraging them to buy in certain neighborhoods and even avoiding neighborhoods that had cell towers and electrical things within distance and especially within backyards. So once again, it's just subjective, but I heard that for decades, and it matters. It really does matter to home buyers. So I just felt it was necessary that a newer home buyer who is looking for homes in this environment of cell towers popping up, it's important that the neighborhoods and the residential areas are protected from these large industrial techno things from their windows and from sight, from their houses. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes? Dan? I believe.
My name's Daniel Beal, I'm at 2011 Eldorado. I do want to add my name to the list of new home buyers here. We, we did pay $25,000 over asking to get into Eaglebrook. We moved here from Florida last year to find a home, to start a family. We looked in Wheaton, we looked kind of in Naperville, neighborhoods all over the Chicagoland area. We found Geneva to be idyllic for, you know, many reasons, but Eaglebrook specifically and the Eldorado, you know, part of that neighborhood specifically just due to the fact that you had the convenience of Randall Road. And, you know, my wife and I always like to joke, we're five minutes from everything. It seems like we can go to anywhere in five minutes. But we look out our backyard and it's a nature sanctuary. We have sandhill cranes, birds of all kinds, foxes, coyotes, otters. So it's, it's a beautiful place. But given the fact that we bought in some of the hottest of times, actually looking at graphs of when we bought is somewhat depressing. We're approaching a year in a couple of weeks from when we closed. And the prospect of being in that blue critical area that you had so eloquently shown here is, you know, it's a real blow. And, and I think that, you know, again, from someone who came here from out of state and handpicked this neighborhood, I, I think it's important that I add my name and my perspective to the comments tonight, so thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, anyone else wishing to testify? All right, going once, twice? All right, we'll hear from the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Property Zone B5. B5 zoning permits 100-foot stealth cell towers, conditioned upon meeting the nine conditions. What I demonstrated here tonight is that we met those nine conditions. A lot of the comments tonight were regarding property values. Been involved in a thousand cell tower sites, I don't see it. My testimony is maybe as good as anybody else's. We understand that cell towers go up, there's sometimes a flurry, and then it goes away. And people, and the most difficult decision is, will this be a good decision five years from now? Well, I wish I had voted for it, I'm glad I voted against it. This cell tower will be a significant asset to this area. We've demonstrated it, we've hired a real estate appraiser, commercial appraiser, general appraiser from certified by the state of Illinois to demonstrate on the record there is no impact on property values. That's my personal experience too. There's antennas on my son's school, there's antennas on my son's high school. Cellular phones are part of our ecosystem. We need, if the condition is, we don't want to see a cell tower from a home, I believe it's an unrealistic condition. Cell towers have to be in the air, they're line of sight technology, they have to be able to be seen, to be used. I demonstrated tonight through a sworn affidavit from our network engineer, we have a need for this site. So again, I don't agree with that. Evaluations of, and even comparing our tower to other towers in the area, we specifically chose, because of the community, the stealthiest design that we could handle. We didn't go to the full 100 feet, you know, the RF would like that. We pushed it down to 85 feet, we're building a brick wall around the base of the tower. We set it as far back away from the residents as possible. The idea being, well, just can't you move it down the street? You're going to run into other residents, they're going to see something. You have cell towers, let me restate, the condition is you cannot, I don't want to be able to see them, it's an unrealistic condition. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Can we ask the applicant some questions?
Certainly.
I'm just interested, I think I've heard your, your opinion on the, on the appraised value. Do you have any particular thoughts on the data that Ms. McCafferty put forth as far as distance from the towers and whether or not you think that has any validity?
Certainly, I'm not, I don't know with the data, I don't, I'm not in the position to evaluate all the options that she used in her report. It was very well presented, it was very well, I enjoyed the presentation style. I just can't comment one bit about the underlying assumptions made and whether they apply to our cell site. They did mention the other two towers, I can say that they were, obviously, I think it was mentioned tonight, they were built before the subdivision was built, and yet people purchased homes even with those two cell towers there. So I would, I would just, our cell tower is a stealth tower, and it's specifically designed to be the best application of providing the coverage and capacity that we demonstrated that we need to this community. And I know there's sensitivities, and that's why we picked the site that we did, and that's why we designed it the way that we did.
So you can stay up there for a minute.
Sure.
There was a couple of comments about getting more definitive data or about the lack of capacity or the need for capacity beyond just an affidavit, whether it's directly from Verizon or whether it's, how physically does that carry or determine that they're about to bust a gut and not be able to handle their clientele?
So the RF data, as you might imagine, between telecom companies is proprietary. Now, in situations like this, we have, in certain circumstances, provided additional information on drop calls. It was mentioned earlier that our network hasn't busted yet, but the network engineers are patching it right now. They, they can transfer data to other neighboring towers, they can throttle, throttle down. So in other words, maybe they're not getting the full speed that they expect. Those are, those are tactics used to keep the network working at its peak efficiency, but those are failing. And so that's our testimony.
And that, you are asserting and testifying that that is occurring for Verizon in this market today?
I'm certifying that the application, the paperwork submitted by the radio frequency engineers is correct, and that that is my testimony, that's his, I'm certifying that that's his testimony and it's on the record, if that makes sense.
You know, I think three years ago we talked about the sensitivity to the proprietary nature of the business and the information. They don't want their competitors to know certain things, but that's, that almost works against them in getting things like this embraced by a community or a council or anything else, right? So, I mean, do they sometimes come forward and open the kimono a little more?
Yeah, I would, I would say this, if there was, if you wanted to add a condition tonight that we will provide prior to the city council meeting additional information on the need for this cell site, proprietary information. Now, there's usually some confidentiality, we share it with the members of the city council, we share it with attorney, and we ask that it not be made public. But we do make it available to the commission members who need to make a decision. So we can, if you wish to add as a condition, we are willing to submit additional information regarding our need for this cell site, including drop calls, throttled calls, and the future neighboring cell sites and their capacity.
I mean, don't you think that if Verizon has those issues, T-Mobile's having the same issue, AT&amp;T, they're all on the same towers, right? So what, what does it hurt them to disclose that, is what I'm trying to understand?
Yeah, there's, as all industries, there's proprietary information in all industries, and this is part of their proprietary. But they will release it, especially in situations like this, where it's important to their network and without it, it hurts their network, and will continue to hurt the network into the future.
Have you seen any of that information that's proprietary? I'm not asking you to show, share it with us, I just wanted to know if you've seen some of it in order for you to be convinced that this is a site search.
Well, so our access to that is through the radio frequency engineers, and they tell, maybe it makes it clear, they don't have enough budget to fill all the gaps in their coverage. So they go after the most important sites with available budget that they have, and this is considered one of their most important sites. Now, if your question is prove it, you know, again, we'd make a condition on the motion tonight that we would provide additional slides that are kept confidential for the city council members.
John, if I may, before you move on, I have associated questions with that. It may be proprietary in nature, but this is, we've had this a number of times before us, and it's always comes up on the smaller cell sites, right? The small solution, as you said in your testimony, 20 small locations to provide similar coverage or at least tide you over so you're not always right at the threshold. Is there a cost comparison between a tower and 20 small cell units? Are you prepared to provide that? It is proprietary information potentially, but this is what I'm thinking it from my perspective. This might just be a cost factor, it's easier to build the tower than put on 20 units.
No, and that's a good point, they're just, maybe this is just Verizon's way to get the same coverage on a cheaper way. But it's, as stated in the RF engineers' report, that the small cells are not pragmatic or realistic, and they will not obtain, will not obtain the same coverage and capacity as one macro cell will. And so, and when, it was, it mentioned earlier, perhaps this is very dense, busy areas work best, you know, baseball games. You know, you know, areas which there's reoccurring street festivals, those are where you've got a lot of people in a very small area, that's where they shine. But large suburban areas is not where they shine.
Back to Scott's question though, in order of magnitude, if it's, and I'm purely guessing, if it's $5 million to put this tower up, what would it cost to provide the same coverage in small cell apparatus?
I don't have that information.
Is it, is it more expensive?
Well, each individual small cell is much cheaper.
Correct.
I don't have the cost figure on that, but to do, I don't, I can't compare and contrast. I guess when, if there's a feeling that this is a cheaper way out, my testimony tonight is that it's not a cheaper way out. It's more, it's more effective for the, for the, for the market and for the, it's not, as he said in his testimony, not pragmatic to use small cells. They go to 200 feet, so they just don't provide the capacity.
So you would have, you would have to go for, if it took 20, I think we've heard the number 20, I don't know where that came from. You'd have to go, I don't know who that is, but, I don't know. If, you'd have to go and find 20 locations, do 20 leases, negotiate with 20 landowners to replicate what you've got here. to replicate what you've got here, so it's very tedious, right?
Potentially, potentially you can go in right of ways. We've done that, I've worked on small cells, we can go in right of ways.
Can go on street lamps.
That's right, we can attach equipment to existing utility poles in areas where it does work.
Before we move on, just one other area that was touched upon by the residents quite a bit was the alternative locations, whether it's talking about why wasn't Walmart included or what, what other data or what other rationale do you have for not considering the other locations besides the, besides just the rationale given of proximity to residential, which we've been debating back and forth tonight?
Yeah, most of the, the Randall Road is the center of the issue that we're trying to address and including the neighboring residents. Neighborhood residents be the ones who benefit into the future with enhanced coverage. So, and with the Walmart parcel is on the southern edge of the search ring. That's, that's, that is, the issue I got back from Walmart is that it'll create a gap on the north edge. So, in other words, if you go to the south end of a search ring, it starts to create a gap on the north edge. So, the, as you move towards the center of the search ring, they do throw out a big net sometimes, the RF engineers throw out a big net, but really, as you move towards the center of the search ring, those are the most effective sites, the most effective. And I've never, I've done this for 25 years, I've never done a lease or heard of a lease with Walmart, and I don't know even if, if what's involved in that, and what's going to be involved with doing a lease. And there are some homes even behind, Walmart won't want it in the front parking lot, they'd want it on the edge, and there are some homes over on the edge of the Walmart site, too.
And there is brand-new residential behind Walmart.
Right, and that, and they will be seen, the tower will be seen by the brand-new residents there, too.
So, really, the prime locations are the commercial corridor along the Randall Spine?
Correct.
That's all I have right now.
I just had a quick question. Sit back a little bit. With the smaller towers, the 20 towers that we were talking about, do those towers offer the ability for the co?
Co-location.
The co-location?
That's a great question, and no, they don't. They're for one carrier.
Okay, and so, how does that relationship work with Verizon? You put it up, and then other carriers?
Yeah, that's a point I'd not brought up. If you did a small cell, T-Mobile would have to do their small cell network also. AT&amp;T would have to do their small cell network, too. They don't, they don't work together, whereas one pole would combine all that concealed in one pole.
Okay, thank you.
Can I?
Yes, certainly.
Grab him one more time. You answered the Walmart question, but we have, I think, about nine other alternative sites within the circle that were purely declined for viability because of proximity to residential. So, could you just, what's different about this site from those sites?
If you drew a circle, a 250-foot circle or 350 or 4, 500-foot circle, notice that this particular site will have fewer homes in it than the other properties that are along Randall Road. In other words, if you shift the site a block north, two blocks north, five blocks north, there are homes all along, along there, or south, five blocks south. So, and again, we're limited to how far we can go because we do have a site one mile north, and we do have a site one mile south. So, this is the site that's equidistant, but we can move, you know, and we looked, and, you know, we certainly, and I've been doing this for a long time, we certainly want to find that sweet spot. You know, if there was an industrial park, if there was a, you know, where we could, there's another path, we would take that other path. My testimony tonight is that there is no other path.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Sure.
On that last question, so, so the answer is the, as it relates to other residential properties, is not necessarily the distance, but the number?
The number of homes.
That would be impacted within a certain radius.
Correct, more homes would see the 85-foot cell tower in other areas that are closer to residential. So, in other words, we have the park, we have, we have, half of the site is totally commercial, about a third of the site is residential, and that goes maybe back 400, I'm sorry, the park is perhaps 400 feet, so there's no homes in there. And we do have a subdivision that is, we're within that circle, but that's, when compared to other sites, that's a smaller number of homes that are affected than. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we seem to be drifting into the discussion phase, so I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing. Madaskil second.
So, we're assuming we have no more questions for the applicant?
Oh, he can stay there.
Well, but once we close the public hearing, you can't, you can't have any.
I have no further questions.
Mead?
Aye.
Slavka?
Slavka, aye.
Holloman?
Holloman, aye.
Madaskil?
Madaskil, aye.
Moran?
Moran, aye.
Stocking?
Stocking, aye.
So, I would just mention at this time, you know, we obviously can have general deliberation, but a primary focus on the findings and what the situation is with those in terms of whether he meets the nine criteria before us.
And I'll just add, too, for the commissioners, so the staff report, staff's findings were that the standards were met. If the debate leads into, you know, the commissioners aren't finding those standards to be met, just please clarify for the record why, or what standard is not being met and why, if that standard is not being met in your opinion.
Thank you. Yes?
Mr. Chairman, I'll go first, and if you'll indulge me for a moment. It is occasionally the necessity of government to impose benefits on the constituency even if they don't want them, but in order to do so, I think the evidence to support such an action must be abundant, and it must be compelling. I'm sorry, but I don't find either here, and I see three particular issues that I'm stuck on. The first is capacity. Commissioner Mead brought it up. You may recall, three years ago, I raised the same issue, and I remember it vividly because it was my first meeting and my first question, and the response was, "I can't tell you that," and that continues to be the response. And as an attorney, I appreciate corporate confidentiality. I'm not criticizing that, but it leaves open the question as to whether there is a greater benefit to be derived here other than what's asking to be imposed on this neighborhood. And without knowing either the capacity or the drop dead date at which this, in fact, becomes dangerous, I don't think you've made your case on that issue. The second issue is the appraisal, is property values. I'm a real estate tax attorney, I'm a certified Illinois assessing officer, I have a license of management, real estate broker, I've reviewed thousands of appraisals in my 36 years. This is a very unusual appraisal. It is a snapshot in time. It does not apply the three generally accepted approaches, but for its purpose, it does comply with rules. However, what most of us have learned when you look at appraisals is that it's the adjustments that help the trier of fact decide if this is persuasive or not. This appraisal is sorely lacking in adjustments, sorely lacking in the necessary detail to allow me to conclude whether or not it is compelling. On the other hand, what we have seen from the neighbors is a variety of independently obtained, verifiable information, and the last one, Ms. McCafferty's, was particularly intriguing because she went and found homes built by the same developer in similar areas, Donata Arrowhead in Wheaton, and made the case that one could conclude that the values are in fact impacted by putting a cell tower, or whatever we choose to call this, into the neighborhood. And I was intrigued and perhaps persuaded more by that than I was by the appraisal evidence. And my third issue, and again, Commissioner Mead did a nice job addressing this, is really the lack of explanation as to why some of these alternatives, Walmart being an example, really was not fully explored. And based on all that, I cannot support this, and to do a particular justice, I would look at standard one, proposed use at the specific locations consistent with the comprehensive plan. I don't see it. The comprehensive plan designates this area for retail and service options. I just don't see a cell tower as a service option. I don't think that's what they had in mind. In addition to which, number one points out that the proposed tower would generate a minor visual disruption. Minor is in the eyes of the beholder. And again, if minor means it's going to have a noticeable impact on value, then I think standard number one has not been complied with. Standard number two will not diminish the value of adjacent nearby properties. I think enough has been said about that, and I just covered that as well, so I think it does not meet that standard. And even if I can't conclude that the neighbors' presentations affirmatively prove the point, what they do do is bring ambiguity to the table on this issue, and ambiguity is the enemy of property value everywhere. If you insert that question and people have to think about it when they're making an offer, you've affected value. So, I don't think standard number two has been complied with as well. And standard number five, the proposed building or use will not adversely affect or change the character of the area. And here, I think the detriment is arbitrariness because it says it's 243 feet from the nearest single-family residence, and then it points out that others are 190 or 415 feet, and I am just not persuaded that this fairly arbitrary distance has any meaning or overcomes the burden to the city and particularly this neighborhood of not adversely affecting the property and the area involved. And so, for those reasons, I'm sorry, I cannot support this.
Any other input from John?
I came into this evening having watched some video, and I saw you on tape at your first meeting, although I was watching the old tapes, but I also saw, this must be me. I went to the balloon test, I was positively impressed with how 15 feet of lower height seemed to me at the time to be less impactful visually. And I, in reading the staff's report, I, too, thought that there was probably minor impact on, on the character of the neighborhood because of the lower tower and the fact that there weren't cell, cell units visible from the outside. But as we listen to public testimony and the wisdom of my fellow commissioners, I am concerned about standards two and five. Standard two being the property values. I thought that all the comments were relevant, but particularly Ms. McCafferty's presentation brought to light just how impactful those folks are that are proximate to a tower and the potential for their value to be impacted. And then standard five being the character of the neighborhood. So, I, you know, the character can be, maybe, maybe I look at the site and I see another tower sticking up while I also see streetlights in parking lots and everything else, but from the backyards or from the park, that is something that a prospective buyer might account for, and so for that reason, I'm also struggling with, with standard five being acceptable and met.
Michael? Yeah, I think that two and five are probably the most relevant ones here, and, you know, and number two, to Tim's comment about ambiguity, and I think even the appraiser stated in his appraisal that there's no evidence to impact it either way, which would suggest that there does need the opportunity for there to be a negative impact, not disproving a negative impact. So, so I think that, that is a concern as well. And, you know, several people talked about, well, there are a lot of things that go into determining the value, and it may be a cell tower, and some people may object to it, others may not, but a lot of the other factors aren't, aren't at issue here tonight. It's just, it is solely the cell, the cell tower issue. You know, with number five in terms of, of the character, and you're trying to think about this and, and searching for things, one of the, one of the definitions I've found of character had a definition of harmonious, and so I think when we look at, again, the use and the tower, and is it a harmonious use to the, to the residential district across the street? So, I think there's, there's evidence to say it may not be. Thank you. Yes, Rebecca?
I would agree with my fellow commissioners, and I think, you know, the point was brought up about, well, these towers were there before, and people still bought, and that kind of thing, and I guess I feel like even after the last meeting we had, when you know more, you do better. When you can do better, you do better, and this doesn't feel like better than the last meeting. It feels the same. And so, maybe 20 years ago, people felt like, oh, we don't really have an option, we have to buy these lots, and, but now we, we know more, and so, I just feel like, you know, the feedback last time was a different alternative. Give us something different, give us the 20 smaller ones or whatever, and that's not what came back. So, yeah, I guess my position hasn't changed a lot because of that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I, as we're going to, as we make the motion, I'd like to suggest, because whether it's recommended or not recommended, it's going to go to the city council, I think there should be four conditions attached to the approval.
Yes, I believe there were some things that were brought up during the hearing that would be, yeah.
I would suggest that one would be a signed lease with Verizon prior to commencement of construction.
That's one of them.
And issuance of building permit. The second would be, as suggested by a couple of the reports, structural and design plans.
John, your microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Adam.
This, no, I'll probably skip the feedback.
Yeah, he's a little punchy there.
The structural and design plans be provided to the city prior to issuance of the building permit. The third would be, I think this was Adam's comment, the addendum to the NEPA review to be submitted to the city prior to the issuance of the building permit. And fourth, as offered by the applicant, that proprietary evidence from Verizon about demand and capacity be provided to the city council for its review prior to the city council meeting.
I think those, I think those are, they all came out during the hearing, and I think they make perfect sense, so let's, commissioners have any other comments on those?
Okay, let me take it. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that pursuant to section 11 dash 3 dash 12 and sections 11 dash 4 dash 14 dash 4, special use permits of the Geneva zoning code, that a wireless communication tower in the B5 district located at 1749 South Randall Road be approved subject to the findings of fact contained in the staff report, but noting, can I pause for a second?
Yes.
Would I note that standards two and five are deemed by us as not met, or just?
Yeah.
Yeah, that works.
Okay, okay. Subject to the findings of fact contained in the staff report, but further noting that the commission feels that standards two and five of the nine special use conditions have not been met. And further-
Just really quick, so Tim also mentioned condition one, is that, or standard one?
I'll support two and five.
And, and further subject to four conditions to be met prior to the issuance of the building permit. Number one, assigned lease for the tower with Verizon Corporation. Number two, structural and design plans for the foundation and tower. Number three, an addendum to the NEPA review. And number four, proprietary evidence from Verizon to share with City Council prior to the City Council meeting, subject to whatever confidentiality arrangements are needed-
Need to be in place.
...to obtain those from Verizon.
All right, second?
That is moved in second. Anna?
Mead?
Mead, nay.
Slavka?
Slavka, nay.
Holloman?
Holloman, nay.
Madaskil?
Madaskil, nay.
Moran?
Moran, nay.
Stocking?
Stocking, nay.
Matt, next item for that, it's going to go to council?
All right, so we have the, the City Council date scheduled for June 10th. I'll send out a confirmation tomorrow, but same time, 7:00 PM, same location.
All right, thank you very much, everyone, for your participation this evening. Appreciate it. All right, so time, once again, for public comment, so if anyone in the audience wishes to address the commission, just on whatever topic-
I just have one quick thing.
Is it relate, just a quick comment?
Yes.
Please come forward. Address the commission.
One thing that I did not hear anyone talk about in their comments was that, yes, they've lowered it to an 85-foot cell tower, but that, from what I have read, they can add 15 to 20 feet to that without ever have once said it went through and was built, that they can add on 15 to 20 feet without ever having to go through any hearing or anything like that. And I didn't know if I'll be aware of that, you probably are, but I just want to make sure.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Another question?
You can answer a question, we're not going to answer you, you can, you can give an observation or whatever.
Where does the final approval reside? Is it within this committee or is it full City Council?
Staff will tell you that answer.
So the Planning and Zoning Commission is the recommending body, they just made a motion for a recommendation. That recommendation will go to City Council, the scheduled date-
And that recommendation counted and posted, is known, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Thank you very much for that.
Yes, absolutely. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I was a little confused, I wanted to make sure, as far as I understand, if you put up small cells, it doesn't even have to go through Planning and Zoning Commission?
I can't answer that.
It's your number one preferred option, and it doesn't even go through the same And they're, they're also not required to be co-locating with anybody. Small cells are individual carriers, that's how they all are, you have some already in Geneva, like AT&amp;T. There's no ordinance that says, you know, a small cell has to be co-locating with anybody. So your own ordinance says, doesn't even go through this process, they can just put them up. Doesn't have to be voted on, doesn't have to have a public hearing, because your ordinance knows there's no issue with the residents, and that's why it's written the way that it is. I'm glad somebody mentioned, you know, evidence, because the only evidence they turned in was a propagation map, a signal propagation map, and it's a simulation. It's been the same map for 10 years, since the 4G LTE has been put up. That just tell, that just simulates, well, how far might a signal go? But it doesn't have anything to do with capacity. Capacity is how much data the signal carries, and they're not turning in any evidence on that. So they basically stated coverage was their evidence of a capacity need, they're two completely different things. And it was pointed out in here that the engineer's affidavit said everything within the search ring is appropriate for the, to address the coverage and capacity need, but Mr. Dolan stated the opposite of what the engineer stated in his affidavit. So one of them is wrong, I don't know which one, but it's a, it's an inconsistency. I would go more air on the engineer's side, because anywhere in there is an appropriate place to put it, that's according to Verizon. So I'm glad to see that evidence is going to be requested, because there really hasn't been any submitted.
All right, thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to address the commission on any topic?
Anybody?
Any topic?
Not supposed to be rehearsed.
Yeah.
Thank you for the way you handled this all tonight. We appreciate what you guys are doing.
Anything else?
And ladies, sorry.
Yeah.
So I'll just make one final comment, too. To hear testimony that he didn't even try with a major store like Walmart, I don't know what to say about that. Didn't even try. We tried, he didn't. Thank you.
Anything else? All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Matt, what else do we have for other business?
All right, so the one thing I just wanted to mention to the commissioners, we do have just kind of a final call, there is a, a training from the APA for Commissioner Training. It's virtual, it's going to be on Wednesday, May 29th. I know we've got a couple already that want to sign up, but just, just a last call, if you guys are interested, just let us know, we can sign you up. Yeah, Wednesday, May 29th, it's at 7:00 PM. And that's, that's all I have.
Nothing hot coming up or anything?
No, we're, I mean, this was kind of our, our last big application for the, for the moment, we've got a couple other that are under review.
They're not quite ready to come forward.
Yeah, so, I mean, we'll-
June, will we have a meeting?
As of right now, I don't have anything planned for the June 13th meeting. I will keep everyone posted, though, if that, if that changes.
I have a, one question to stand. We've talked, is it? Is your mic? Turned him off. It is me.
It's you?
We have had the occasion to deal with our comprehensive plan and Southeast Master Plans, and we've noted how dated they are. Does, what, what process would we need to go through as a commission to, to recommend to you guys that maybe the city formally updates those plans or makes an effort?
You don't need to, we, we have it in the budget for this fiscal year to proceed with an update.
Okay, because we always talk about it's, you know, maybe 12 years old or whatever it is, and-
We're, we're working on kind of an analysis of the plans and putting together in our, yeah, we would present to the commissions and council-
Okay, good.
...or formally release them.
So that's later-
It's other way.
It's months away, probably, or?
I mean, if we continue to die down here this summer?
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, well, that's good, I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Because we should update that as a more matter of course, right, a matter of business.
Scott, I had a question, it's kind of silly, but on our meeting agenda at the top, it says meeting number 64. What does that refer to?
So in 2019, the city combined the Zoning Board of Appeals and Planning and Zoning Commission. This is the 64th meeting since that-
Validation.
Trivia question.
Trivia question, thank you.
Been many means before that, but that's the new consideration. 64? Yes? Wow.
So if we have a meeting and it's canceled, does, it gets canceled, so it could be-
You mentioned the mic.
If we have a meeting and it gets canceled, does that still count as a meeting, or is it only just?
No, it's a meeting.
Okay, you only add to it when you actually have a meeting.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm going to turn this off now.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you, Matt. Don't want to go, okay. Anything else?